Yeah, we're on. So, call to order, amendment, approval of the agenda.
I have none.
None here, thank you.
Okay.
So, we approve the agenda.
Very good.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It moved in second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Presentations, animal control, containment, and welfare, Commissioner Pash.
Well, this is the start of a conversation with some people around the county that actually, Ms. Jennifer Alcorn, invite you to come up and speak at the podium if you would. But just to be, to begin to discuss the framework of what we currently have with our code enforcement and the possible, the possibility of making some changes to that, making it more efficient, taking some of the burden off of code enforcement and the 24/7 calls that they get about animal control around the county to free them up to do, to focus more on other more pertinent issues. Not that animal control isn't pertinent, but I think Ms. Alcorn has strategized. We've had a couple of meetings and she has a, an idea that she would like to present to the board about the possibility of us looking into for the county. So, I would welcome.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Hey, good afternoon. We actually got some sunshine today, so that's nice. Yes, so last year about this time, I think we had met and it was a little confusing, I think, to myself in regards to who is doing what in the county. And I know that we're trying to lighten the load of the code enforcement because they're trying to do other code in between all the animal stuff that's going on. And I just want to, I want to clarify some things with the commission to make sure that I am correct.
Okay.
My understanding is that Wild Rivers currently resides in a county facility and at the direction of the county houses or has some type of an agreement with you. I don't know what that lease or whatever any of that says, but guarantees a certain level of code for animals. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. Last year, I believe there was some dissension as to whether or not they were fulfilling the obligations under the lease. And I don't know that we ever got that clarified or not, but it had to do with also the monies taken in from licensing, if I'm right.
And that is correct. And County Council Pope couldn't be here today. He's actually on the line, though. But we were hoping to have that contract in front of us and we just don't have it right now.
Okay. Okay, so we're, and maybe they can enlighten us, too, as to what the agreement is as far as what they are to provide. My understanding is that the dog licensing money has gone back to the county in order to pay for code now. That being said, Commissioner Pash and myself and Amy Traver did meet, oh, about a month and a half ago in regards to possibly turning over animal control back to Gold Beach Shelter, organizing animal control for Gold Beach and us doing our own thing down in the South County. I don't believe that they were interested in doing it that time. And I really wanted to know what the licensing fees were because that has a lot to do, this is a business. I'm, I'm in a business. I'm in the business of rescuing, helping animals. And so, money is important. And I have to be able to fund a position in order to take care of that. My understanding, I believe we talked, Amy and I, said there was about $22,000 to $24,000, and that was countywide. Okay, so that's, that's even outside of, say, Harbor and Brookings. So, quite honestly, that's not enough to fund a person to do full-time licensing for my facility. Now, I guess the question that I have is this. If they do not want to, and I'm not talking for you guys, well, have your chance to talk. If they do not want to participate in the animal control part of it, I would love to have that facility and take over animal control for the county. I need a facility, number one. I have plenty of money to buy a facility. If that facility's not feasible to run animal control out of, I would ask that the county find me a piece of land that you may own that I could purchase at a good price. I would develop that and I would put animal control facilities on that. I would also bring in training for the, for the county so that people would have the ability to have professional trainers help them with behavioral issues. I would increase the vet medical part for the county, increase vaccination clinics, spay and neuter, which this last year we have done a tremendous amount of trapping and release. And I'm talking countywide. I have, I have people come all the way from Langloes to me to drop off cats. We pick up cats all the way to Coos Bay once a month. And we're doing a lot of community service in regards to vaccinations, spay and neuter. But I do think that I would like to get into the animal control portion of it. That being said, we'd also need the training. And I would like that to be provided by the county. Because I'll be very honest with you, I've got work in my system for days, but I need the knowledge that goes along with enforcing the code for the animals in this county in order to get into it. But I am more than happy and more than ready to take on some additional responsibilities to help the county. Do you have any questions of me?
Wow. Can I have some of your energy? Because I could use a bottle of that right now.
It goes for about $50 a bottle. I'll go into the bathroom and get you some. Or?
Oh, you just said a piece of property. That, that caught my antennas up. So, you know, not to put you on the spot here, but I assume you'd have the resources to build something.
Absolutely.
If we, if we could demonstrate to the citizens that it would, it would be a necessary and legitimate project.
Absolutely.
That would be fun.
You know how many, how many phone calls I get on a, on a weekly, daily basis about people needing help? They come to us because we problem solve and we find solutions. And that's, that's what we want to do is we want to find some solutions for code enforcement here so that he can do his job and free him up. Because I have, I'll be quite honest with you, I don't call code enforcement anymore. I try to handle it on a local level in my own town because I know how overtaxed they are. My husband comes and talks about all these issues that you guys are dealing with. And, you know, that's one less thing that code enforcement needs to deal with. So, if there's animals to be trapped, animals to be caught, animals to be housed temporarily, I've been helping my community in the South area. And then, like I said, we do get a lot of surrenders coming from Gold Beach all the way down into Brookings.
So, we're kind of leaving North County out of this conversation a little bit. Are you okay with?
Absolutely.
Curry County?
Absolutely. And, and you know, currently, currently, I've got Del Norte County coming up for help. I, we don't, I don't turn people away. There's always a solution. It's just a matter of how hard you're willing to work to find one.
Well, and that's what I appreciate, appreciate about you, Jennifer. My previous job as a senior housing manager, she was bent over backwards to help my ladies, my older ladies. And she's just fantastic. So, barking, dog complaints and stuff like that, is that, would that, Melvin, is that something that would be passed with?
Total animal.
Okay. I, I don't have any more questions.
I, I would like to invite Wild Rivers to come up and speak as well, but gosh, I'm having a senior moment right now. I had something else. I guess I can ask you after because I can't remember what I was going to ask you right now because you put it in.
Sorry. Write it down.
So, would someone from, like, Wild Rivers like to come up and?
I can't speak about, I'm Amanda Traver. I'm the new shelter director for Wild Rivers. I can't speak about future or the past on agreements and stuff that you guys have talked about. But I can, I do have the shelter agreement that we have with the county. And it does state that we do have an agreement to house three kennels for code enforcement for 20 years. So, we have it until 2035. And this does state the property described here within shall be subject to possibility of reverter such that the property within the next 20 years from the date of recording of the deed is no longer used as an animal shelter. Now, we're not, we're not going to change what we're doing. We don't want to do animal control. I've done animal control for many years. And I applaud Jen for taking it on. I'd love to team up with her and, you know, hit the road and do it, but I got my own thing going. But the contract states that if we keep our building as an animal shelter for the next 20 years, then we can continue working as Wild Rivers Animal Rescue. So, I do want to kind of clear that up and kind of take our property off of the table right now for Jen's thinking. I kind of get what she's going for and I totally go for it, too. But, you know, that's what our contract kind of states. So, I just want to say that. That's about all I have for us.
Well, real quick, before you leave, Amanda, so can, can the two coexist?
Absolutely. I totally think we can coexist.
If you want to step up and kind of share that mic, you sure can, Jennifer.
I mean, because we have similar minds. We're, we're animal welfare.
Yeah.
That we both.
We do, but we haven't, the communication. My question is, so you'll provide three spots? Is that in order to keep the building? I don't understand what the question is. Because she's basically saying, we want to keep our building, but we don't want to have anything to do with animal control. Is that right?
Right, right now, yes.
So, why would they allow you to keep a building if you're not going to provide services?
Our contract states that we can do it as long as we keep the, the building as an animal shelter. It's going to be an animal shelter. It's not saying it's an impound facility.
Hmm, okay. Well, I know you'd have to, you'd have to look really closely at that.
That's for County Council to decide.
Because I'm probably, there's probably some speculation in there. I don't know.
Does Pope have any further statements on that?
County Council?
Yeah, you know, I'm looking, I pulled up the last contract right now. I'm actually just trying to read it now. I thought that's, I was looking at this before the meeting. So, I really don't have a definite answer. I do see in the contract where it says, you know, that we'll lease the three stalls. I have a feeling that if we deed it over the property to them, then that's probably going to be another agreement. And I'm looking for that right now, actually.
And unfortunately, I apologize that County Council couldn't be here. So, he's just not feeling well and he couldn't be here today.
Keep him home.
There is no separate agreement for the building. There used to be one, but it was integrated with the current agreement. But the, the language in the current agreement is basically the same as the original agreement, just with the building itself. All Billy has to be used for is an animal shelter, not predicated on us having three stalls for the county for impound dogs. Those agreements that we made with the county at that time, that was a great idea because we're centrally located. That was the only agreement. The current agreement was not predicated on us being an impound facility.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Hey, just for the record, that was former Budget Committee member Strauski. Thank you. That's very helpful. This is a workshop. And so, this is very informative. And we've got some key people here. Did we allow a half hour, 45 minutes? What do we need here? Because I don't, I don't want them rushed. I want to kind of.
We got a lot of now, we're on hold.
We allow, we got 20, 45 minutes on the, on the ARS, but.
Okay, good.
Got another half an hour still.
Yeah.
So, if both of you don't mind, if I may, Mr. Chair, if both of you don't mind staying at the podium there, you mentioned a piece of property. So, again, I picked up on that. You mentioned Commissioner Herzog. Where's North County fit into the equation here? So, how do we best serve the county? And, you know, you live in Brookings, you're helping Del Norte County. How could we structure something that would be relatively easy to do or build or, or in conjunction with what you're doing? By the way, you left code enforcement in pretty darn good hands, so we're glad you stayed in Curry County. So, I'm just, I'm just brainstorming here and, and what would be the best scenario that we could put together? Because I think the citizens would have a real genuine interest in, in moving forward. And so, to have you both participate and contribute, Mr. Chair, I think is really helpful. And as I said a minute ago, very informative.
Okay. Well, I know that the overall mission between both of the rescues is fairly similar, but the structure of management in both facilities is, is very different. I have a board that allows me to, to run my shelter. And that's why I'm here and they're not. That being said, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's still a lot of board influence for Amy here in Gold Beach. And that causes a lot of turnaround time where I, I, if I need a decision to pay $800 on a vet bill, I don't want vet, I don't want to have to get board approval. I know where my money is. I know how much money I have. And I can make those decisions right now. That being said, it will be difficult moving forward if we're separate entities, if that's, if that makes good sense. Property, that's going to take a little time to develop. So, you're going to have a gap if I don't have the ability to house animals right now. You're going to have a gap in services. So, I need, I need help to help you. And that means I either need a facility now, or I need property that we can build and an interim facility that's going to allow us to, to continue to give services to this county.
Or we could, we could continue as, as is right now and while you're, while we're, you know, finding a piece of property and putting up a, a facility, correct? Is that?
Possibly.
And what, what part of the county you think would be the best for that?
Quite honestly, Harbor would be a great place. And I realize that that's a, a long way to go. But Harbor is close to veterinary services.
Yep, yep.
And it's close to my facility that allows me to be able to check in and make sure that my facility is running as it should.
And majority of, majority of Curry County is Pistol River South, so.
Yes, sir. And, you know, code enforcement, both of these folks can tell you, they drive hundreds of miles a day.
Yep.
So, it, it doesn't matter where that facility is. You're going to drive to it one way or the other.
And you shared, you go to Coos Bay. And, you know, so you have no, you know, you know where the north end of Curry County is for sure.
Oh, we do.
The dogs are going to have a new county seat in Harbor, huh?
Yeah, and not knowing, you know, just what we own or, you know, have access to. So, this is, this is good discussion.
No, it's just a good starting point. And I, I have told Amanda and I told Jennifer that, you know, we need to, we need to get to work on this. And, and I'm hoping that everyone can work, you know, find a way to, to get this to work together because I think it's in the best interests of the county. And I think it's in the best interests of Code Enforcement Division to, to grow this. And I'm hoping somehow for at least, for temporary, I'm not here to throw a wrench into anything. I'm not here to take anything from anyone that, so I hope no one feels that way. I'm trying to find a, a good scenario here that our, our, the issues with animal control can be best taken care of, expedient, and it is good for the animal as well because we have to care about the animals as well. So, and it's not only the public, but the critters as well. So, I think it's a good first conversation. And I, I will follow up with this, not only with you, Jennifer, but with Wild Rivers. And I, I hope, you know, we can get together and have a meeting and talk about it some more and have County Council's input on it as well. I think that'll be important.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, folks.
One quick.
Well, just thinking, we got another question real quick.
Just real quick. There might be property in Brookings that is vacant, would be, you know, a building that you could modify or something.
You realize I've been looking for that.
I was going to say, you're probably way ahead of me on that. Thank you. But that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, folks. Next on the agenda is transient lodging tax program updates. Summer Mattson, Economic Development Coordinator. Summer! There she is.
Hi.
Hi. Miranda, Leslie.
I'm Summer Madison with Curry County Economic Development. And in prioritizing the updates of the program infrastructure and procedure in our department, we found transient lodging tax program first on the priority list in economic development. And although economic development is not the transient lodging tax administrator for the county, we felt a responsibility to the public to produce a transparent discussion therein with the Board of Commissioners. So, I'd like to thank Commissioner Boyce for his advocacy and support of the lodging industry in Curry, Commissioner Pash for initiating this workshop discussion, and our economic development liaison, Commissioner Herzog for his support and encouragement in this effort. Is somebody on the line?
Yeah, Anthony Pope.
Oh, hi, Council Pope. Okay. Yeah, no, not at all.
He's the only one that can hear. We, us old three guys up here, we can't hear it.
So, the transient lodging tax plan was approved by the voters in May of 2019. And then it was in effect since September 1 of 2019. The TLT program is a great asset to the county and provides for services not easily budgeted for while offering support and growing our economy. In the effort to transparency and to more efficiently communicate the deliverables produced from the TLT program, economic development collaborated with the Events Center, Tourism Promotions Committee, Finance Department, County Council, and the Treasurer to audit, streamline, and solidify overall programming of the transient lodging tax. So, to date, revenue generated from TLT collections is over $2,582,000. Since, as of October 21, we have not, we have not completed collection for this last quarter until the end of this month. So, this is just through October.
Excuse me, from when to when again?
From its inception, so technically January of '20?
So, it was 2019, 2020?
Yeah, yeah. So, we weren't able to use it till the next fiscal year.
It's almost two years, though.
Yeah, so a total of, of eight, eight quarters in, in total.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you'll see that on that spreadsheet that I put there. I just haven't gotten to that part yet.
Yeah, that number kind of jumped out a little bit.
I know. I was going to, I was going to say it again. $2,582,000. And when you consider what every dollar spent on tourism in Curry counter, Curry County actually means, it's almost seven times the dollar. So, you can just imagine the, the revenue that's genuinely bringing into our small businesses, our touring, tourism entities, and lodging establishments. Okay, so relief to the general fund totals $749,864. Yeah, 749,864. Of that, 729,156 goes to county law enforcement. The Finance Department has only been collecting for three quarters. Technically, we amended Order 1913 with 2002, and that allocated 5% to the administrative services of the Finance Department to help us out with that, that program. So, that, since 11 of '20, is almost $21,000, just for three quarters. So, collectively, it's 749,000, almost 750,000 relieved of the general fund. To date, for tourism staff, including the aquatic safety program and resource investments, over $212,000. Tourism promotions, I should say tourism and promotions because it's not just promotions, it's tourism infrastructure. You know, when you see that new electric car charging station on the wayside, that's, that's tourism, too. It's not just fancy posters. Over $904,000. And then the Events Center on the beach has allocated over $856,000. So, I think you can see why we felt it necessary to kind of have this discussion and show some transparency for the public in this program. All right. Just quickly, want to show you what resources we have available so that you know, but more importantly, anybody asking knows. So, this is our economic development page. And you know, you've got all your fancy information down here. But on the left, we have a tab specific to transient lodging tax program. And I didn't just put transient, transient lodging tax on there, but the program, because that doesn't exist anywhere else on the county website. And with as big of a program as it is, I think it's important that it has a presence. So, there it is. If we want to move it, I have no problem with that. The only other sub-tab to that, to a page is Tourism Promotions Committee. Miranda will visit with you in conjunction with the committee chair. So, transient lodging tax, we had this information kind of everywhere. And in working with the other departments, this worked best with pulling all the information into one space for folks to resource. So, we've got news at the top there. You know, this workshop and the agenda link is, is posted. The updates on the destination management plan is on there. Program FAQs, you know, people call and ask the most important questions all the time. And so, we kind of collected those, threw it into a document, and there it is. The TLT allocations report. And so, that's what this is here, the spreadsheet I gave you. And pretty much it breaks it down for every department that is funded and every program that's funded through TLT, along with an accrual of the program since its inception. So, finance, the Treasurer and Miranda did an audit of TLT because that hadn't been done since really it had started. And so, it was important that we made sure that we were on the right track before we got too far into this program and had to backtrack. And so, you'll see at the bottom of that, and I'll pull it up here because this is something people ask about all the time. So, and I mean, even for us, it's a little confusing. Hence, the reason you'll see a scrivener's error coming for 2002 at some point because the allocations and percentages in there are a little bit misleading. And we want that to be a little clearer. So, so here's all the numbers that are available as they're updated quarterly. And those are basically the numbers that I had given you. But the allocations breakdown here shows as of quarter three of 2021. That's because prior to that, there was no 5% for finance to help support that amount of, you know, processing for, for that program. So, you'll see the 70% of 100% is broken down by the percentages on the left there. And then the remaining 30% is between the Finance Admin Service and Deputies for the Sheriff's Office. And so, when you're looking at those numbers, they should match up to the percentages you're looking at. And it can be kind of difficult to mitigate that in 2002. So, you may see a scrivener's error filed for that. Okay, so let's just go back. I slowed your mouse down a little bit, guys, so I apologize for that. So, we're going to go down. There's a cool, you know, transient lodging tax. I remember the first time we looked to pass this. And the misconception of, of what that means is certainly prevalent. So, we've just got some information here for people to look at at their leisure. The TLT Review Committee, just so you know, that's not mandated and required, but it is an option that the Board of Commissioners has as kind of a buffer between yourselves as the tax administrators and the Promotions Committee and all the other different programs. But so far, because we don't have that, we've kind of filled that gap with where we're at right now. So, there's a link to serve on the committee. If we get applicants, that'd be great. And then, what's the Tourism Promotions Committee been up to? So, I'm not going to click there because, again, that's going to be Miranda's gig and, and Leslie. All of the forms that we need for transient lodging are down here below. They're fillable. They, they have a pretty in-depth directions and instructions. We still get those calls and that's fine. And then the order of the orders and as they've been amended. And so, 1913 here is when you see the change in, actually, it's 2002 here is where you see the change in, in allocations for the departments and the percentages. So, you'll see they're not consistent throughout the inception of the program. And then the State's Lodging Tax because we pretty much fall in line with what the state does with their TLT. So, there's all that. I'll leave that for Miranda. Okay, so. So, I know that we've talked about TLT collections for county parks. I ran those numbers. And based on $125,000 revenue, which was budgeted for this last fiscal year, or our current fiscal year, that would estimate an annual collection of $8,750 with $437 of administrative collection fees, which is .05 percent, or .5% of the 7% collected. Let's see, we reviewed the pages. TLT funds and service hospital, okay. So, the second page is. Okay, so the second page of the pack that I've given you. I know that Commissioner Boyce has seen through the housing committee, Sam Engel sent us an email. And I was so excited because just maybe two months ago, Council Pope and I went through the TLT ordinance, and I said, hey, can we fund tourism or workforce housing through this? It doesn't say we can't, and it'd kind of be cool if we could. You know, it'd be a nice option for revenue to do that. And so he had perused through that, and I don't want to quote him, but basically, he says it doesn't say we can't do that. So I was like, that means we can. And then coincidentally, an email from Sam Engel during the housing committee meeting, he sent us a lot of legislation being looked at to fund housing through TLT. So, that frame of mind is really catching at the state and federal level. So I'm excited to explore that a little bit with you guys and see if that might be an option for us to help support our workforce locally.
By the way.
Yes, sir.
Two of his links at the bottom were referenced in Portland, so that's a little scary. But no, it's good information. And yeah, he went above and beyond on that. That was very insightful. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, it was good information for sure. That third page is the tourism promotions committee transient lodging tax activity and investment overview. Miranda's going to bring that up on the committee page here in a few minutes and review that with you. Let's see, a couple more things, I think, and then I'm going to ask Bob Chabante with the event center to come up and speak to the event center's commitment and responsibility in transient lodging. And then Miranda with tourism, and Leslie with the tourism promotions committee. So, so the county parks collection, we just haven't started that yet. I know that Penny Hudgens and I have talked a couple of times about making that happen. And because we've been focused so much on TLT this past week, it looks like that will happen fairly soon. So, that will be in addition to the revenue coming in through TLT as well. Aquatic safety, so as you recall, there was a majority to support the aquatic safety program through TLT admin dollars. And after the audit this past week, I may make the recommendation to the budget committee that that program be funded through tourism promotions money funding as a program and not necessarily administrative staffing. And that is because this month and the next month or so, Miranda and I are focused on securing the infrastructure and the procedures for our programs so that there is no deficiencies in the workload when it comes to being efficient with OLCC and focusing more on housing and making sure that our business licensing is lined out and easy and understandable. You know, when we talk about intermediaries, not most people know what that means. And I'll admit, I didn't until we got knee-deep into TLT. So, just making it as easy as possible for folks to understand when they have the knowledge, then they feel more confident and successful in what they're doing. So, I'm not going to even click on that right now. You can click later. You'll see it says under construction with a bunch of notes and hopes and dreams. But that's kind of where we're at. We're just focusing on transient lodging tax program first. It's the most important. It's the one that people are asking about the most. And so we wanted to make sure that we did our part in coming forward with that transparency. One last thing before Bob comes up is, we met with the event center. We actually have, over the past couple of weeks, had conversations with every program that's funded by the TLT. We all want to make sure that we're on the same page because we don't have that managerial component in place for the county, and y'all can't talk to each other openly on everything. It was important for all of us to get together and make sure that we were on the same page. This is a big program to be responsible for. And so one of those conversations took place with the event center. And we are talking about how we can leverage what revenues the, our department and tourism promotions has available with the funds coming available and available currently for the event center, and how we might be able to make the most of that and look at outside dollars to leverage the TLT dollars, loan options, whether it's CCD, a CDBG grant, the road department, existing tourism promotions dollars, the shuttered venue grant. I know that's been applied for once. We've got it coming up again. The first of three portions of that came out today, as a matter of fact, and other opportunities through business organs. So, one of the things that we have found with the event center when doing some long-term planning is the event center is not really like a nonprofit, but they're also not government. And so they fall into this gray abyss of, well, you're not this and you're not that, so you're not eligible for anything. And so we need to look forward and secure what that looks like and how we can best support the event center in not getting into a position where they're at currently because the funds available to them with TLT, thank God they're there. You know, where would we be if we didn't have the TLT funds for the event center now? And how can we get there as soon as possible? Because at the rate we're going, it's going to take a very long time to. Okay, Bob, I'm done. It's your turn.
Quick question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Summer, real quick, Court's got a question.
Real quick, would you mind going back one slide?
Sure. What do you want to look at?
The very bottom on the orders.
For transient lodging?
Yes. Good. Is the last one, Ms. Summer, Ms. Madison, is that where we changed from the 5% administration to 10%?
So.
Or one of those last two?
Yeah, so it changed all of them a little bit. Like the event center got a 5% increase. Tourism promotion committee, I think, took a decrease. The sheriff's department stayed the same. I can run those percentages for you and show you the succession of that.
Well, it just seems like we went to 10%, and you're saying that 10% goes to finance?
No, no, the, if you take a look at the allocation spreadsheet, it's going to show you that 5% of the 30% goes to the administrative services in finance. And it's basically because we have a lot of processes with funds coming in.
No, I mean, I think it was totally justified, but I just want the public to know, so that's good. The other thing I have is on aquatic safety. Remind the public again how much TLC gave this year and also how much Travel Southern or even Coast gave to aquatic safety.
Okay, so I think we're still waiting on that check-in contract from TSOC. If not, it's come in this week, and I believe that they have committed $20,000 to the aquatic safety program, and the hope is that that's expanded into Coos County as well. They've seen greater success in California with the aquatic safety programs. And I don't want to speak too much to that because it's not my program, but most often times, Luke Martinez that runs that program is the first face of tourism that most of our visitors see, and we're extremely grateful for that. Miranda's produced some materials, and you can visit with them about that, okay? But we committed $40,000 annually to the aquatic safety program. And that's great because it only takes one negative article in a newspaper in a big city to knock us out for the next few years as far as tourism goes, right? So, I'm really excited about the investment in having Luke there and being that safety measure, especially in Samuel Boardman, that continues to make that visitor experience a positive one. So, yeah, that's $40,000 from transient lodging and 20 from TSOC.
Very good thinking. That's all I have, mister.
Hey, Summer.
You bet.
Bob.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
What's up, Bob? What about Bob?
What about Bob? Put my glasses on, I can see what I'm doing. Good afternoon, Bob Chabante. Today, Gold Beach, I'm representing the fair board. Our fair manager can't make it today. We're just making sure that she's, everybody's healthy, just precautions. So, speaking on behalf of the event center, this is when all this TLT, it's kind of good to see these numbers. And as you remember, not $1 came from a citizen of Curry County unless you stayed in a hotel. So, this is a very good deal that came out and got done. And actually, when the inception was thinking about it, it's kind of exceeded. Part of that, call it fortunate, is our current environment. So people aren't taking planes and cruises and stuff like that, and they're looking for something. So our coast here is a destination place, so this thing is looking to continue. So I was asked to speak about what's kind of going on at the event center. One thing to think about too is about the value of the event center. Is really developing the partnership throughout the county, north and south, everybody done for the benefit. And probably our biggest thing that you can see, which we like to see more of, is going towards is when we had the Sony pictures were here, and that one month they're here, they brought in nearly a million dollars to our area. So it's good value to have, so it's why it's worth developing and investing in and take care of it. So I gave you guys a sheet. It's kind of where we're at right now. And the projects are going on, and we're, considering where we're at, we just, we had our, the strategic master plan was completed in 2020, and we're now in the process of phasing our projects get done. Looking for developing the convention center, the arena, the RV park, and our facilities so we can bring them up to date. Most of the stuff were built in the 40s, 50s. I think the newest work was done pre-1990s. So it's been held pretty good together with a Band-Aid and a few strings and stuff, so we're trying to get that done. So it was a great investment. We're looking to try to do, we're looking at developing the convention center. For one thing is, we had an opportunity to bring another movie company in and bring that stuff so we can imagine bringing those dollars. And again, the problem was, we didn't have breakout rooms for them, which we were going to use for whatever needs they had to do it. That's what you kind of need, to bring conventions here to do that. So even just a movie theater, the impact that it made on the local economy, the restaurants, the hotels, the stuff, it all improved all that, and we're looking to do more. Pre all this, the southern coast was also a destination looking forward to work vacations. So we're bringing a group down here, bring group of 200, 300 people come down there, need a place to go, have the convention center, at the event center down here. Have their meetings, and they stay in the hotels, they shop, they go to restaurants, and enjoy the coast. So we're really looking at developing that going forward here, so where we're at. So if you have any questions on this stuff, I can do it. But one of the things that did come up, and we're looking in the discussion, is I'm trying to pair to try to get these projects done as soon as possible. And alternate funding and the use of a loan and how we do it, and fund it with the TLT funds so we can get these things up faster would be a good way to go, and that's been part of our discussions on this. As you look at here, the bottom of that page you gave you are future projects that we're working on right now is the arena and the RV park. Of course, the arena is, if you've been in there, is a very gloomy place. And so we're going to try and improve with some lighting, to get that taken care of. So it'll be modern lighting, so it'll be energy efficient. The biggest thing was this structural problem, and we were getting ready to do a roof. Roof, all the purlings on a roof looked really good until they looked at the bases. So looked at the bases, so they were pretty restless. We're trying to take care of that. So it's a safety issue and trying to get that done. The convention center would be, would be the addition, it's most likely going to be is the area between Showcase and Doja, the two main buildings up front. For people who don't know what that is, and it'd be connecting that with two stories, and it would have your breakout rooms and movable walls so we can open them up, close them big or small, or whatever they need to get done, and that's what we're doing it. Another thing we're looking ahead at, the barn remodeling that's going on here. That number is our maximum number we're looking at, but we're trying to look into investing into horse tourism. It's also, it's also the fairgrounds is used as an emergency evacuation, such as the fire. When the fire come, we had animals come down there, and people brought them, and let's take care of it. But in the meantime, we want to try to use that for a, to promote people to come in and bring a trailer with a horse, and they can go right to the beach. We have the best access to get to the beach and do that, and that'll bring more people in to do that, the town. The dorms, we're looking at, that number there could be as low as 15, and it's going up to 75. Historically, the dorms have been used for the summer for the firefighters to stay in, to keep that crew around here to do that. We're also looking at the opportunity to try to bring in some youth groups or some other groups, that larger groups that don't have a place that they can stay, that they need to have a mutual kitchen that can do something. Work with 4H and things that would do that. And then, of course, we're looking at the office building in OSU. And of course, and then the dorm also might be included if we're required to put in an elevator, which would be ADA required, and you can put in a lift right now, costs you $30,000 just for a single lift. So that's why your numbers are looking like that. And then the office building in, in the OSU remodeling, keep that partnership going strong with OSU. They're very important that they have here to do that. We're trying to find a way to bring more of their programs in with us and still make us a healthy partner with the community and the county here to go. And that's where I'd say right now, we're in the process where we're taking, you know, using the funds wisely, and we have the group coming in, our Oshlin group is what it is. And they're doing our designs right now. They're going through all the surveys and getting all the paperwork and our ducks in order, and making sure that we have everything done to move on to the next phase, which would be the development of the blueprints, drawings, the final planning in accordance to our master plan. So if you have any questions?
I have one.
Okay, Court, Chris?
You know, one question for me is the TLT revenue that you're showing on this sheet, does that include the partnership that we share with the city of Gold Beach and their contribution?
No, it does not show the Gold Beach. This is just from the county. How that works with the city of Gold Beach is what happened when we had the roof that we're going to repair on the arena. They have a project, put it out to bid, they look at it, we give them a need, and they handle everything start to finish. It doesn't, we just, we just say, here's where we go and go for providing paperwork.
As you know, but I don't know of all of our citizens, though, Gold Beach has contributed greatly to the fairgrounds.
Yes.
So, it's a great partnership to have, and I just, that's why I just wanted to kind of give them that.
Yes, and we've mentioned that before, yeah. The city of Gold Beach, they've been very upfront with helping out, understanding the value of what this is to the community and the county, and it helps. So they have stepped up and done their part to help out.
Thank you, sir.
You got it.
Court, just really, you know, I know you've been working a lot of years along with others on the RV park. And I just, I think you or somebody told me that that would be the only RV park that close to the ocean edge in the whole Oregon coast, except maybe for Brookings, Port of Brookings. So do you remember, we were talking about that, or what the accuracy is on that?
I don't know how accurate they were closest. It depends if you want to say technically oceanside, but they're in the port district, they could be that close. But we're right there where you're not climbing down rocks, trails, easy access. You could actually, we can improve the access so you can bring the wheelchair accessible, beach accessible wheelchairs in there so they can float those right in across the sand. So, yeah, you can't get much closer. You're going to be right there. And I would think if we got a tape measure out, we probably would win by a few inches or so.
I'm just really happy that that's a priority. It has tremendous potential and income potential.
Yes, and that's the whole point. And we're trying to do is try and so we can provide an income so one day when things change, it's going to be self-supporting to take care of that. That is the goal, to happen to get it done, to create some jobs and to have that income to do that. So it's, yeah, yeah. And then the nice thing about the RV park, there is a shortage for RV spaces here.
There's demand.
I mean, the last two years, everybody was buying their COVID wagons, and now they need a place to go, and everybody has an RV, and there's not, the RV parks haven't kept up with that. So it's going to be a welcome addition to bring them here and not be battling against anybody else doing it because every space is full, as it is now.
Good job.
Bob, my question is, how do we get you out of this abyss, this gray abyss that Summer was talking about?
Well, what she's talking with, like I said, we have tried, and we're looking at other avenues to try to, more for grant writing and stuff that would fit our needs. But we have that thing where you're not technically government, so you can't get it, and you're not technically private, and you're not technically nonprofit, even though nonprofit was a good fit for a lot of years. So it's finding that right niche. So the answer may not be a grant. The answer may have to, we may have to seek a loan and have the funds from the TLT to take care of that so we can get these projects up ahead of time. Because the trick of it is, we're looking at now, when we brought this out, these prices, we're looking back in 2020, pre-inflation, pre-this. The longer you wait, the less likely you're going to get your return fast enough to do that because the cost is going to go up, and you just, we don't want to lose it. And you just, we don't want to lose interest, and we're really looking to try to develop this, to be a partner with the community and do that. But that's, I don't know how we get out of that gray area, but the Summer and her department, and people are really good to try to find it. We're working together, a partnership, to try to see if we can find that one.
All right.
So, shorter answers, I don't know.
All right, sir. Thanks, Bob.
Sure thing, thank you.
Miranda, does that mean you're next?
Miranda Plagie, Economic Development Assistant. So primarily, my duties are with not only TLT, but business licensing. So I kind of have quite a bit on my plate right now. But I do work in conjunction with the Tourism Promotion Committee as a secretary for that committee. And because of COVID, we haven't actually had an opportunity to promote quite a bit. There was a lot of regulations as far as promoting was concerned with COVID for the last couple of years. So we've been in a holding pattern. We did actually start doing a little bit of promoting last summer. And unfortunately, I ended up out sick for a while. So we've sort of gotten back into that promoting, and I'll let you know where we're at right now. So we'll go here, on our page here. So here's the Promotion Committee page, where they can find the information. We're working on our Destination Management Strategic Plan. We actually have a kickoff call tomorrow. A lot of the information in that will be with the community stakeholders, and so we have those in place. And we have another committee that will be charged with actually helping look out who we are contracting with to do this plan. So promoting and sustaining tourism in Cree County. And just to sort of touch light on my committee members. We have Leslie here, Leslie Wilkinson, she's our chair. Terry Dominic, who actually is the longest sustaining person on our committee. She's here in Central, she actually owns Coastal Market out on the 101. We have Klaus, he's from South County, and you guys might know him from Festival Lights. He runs that. Dave McCutcheon is up north in Port Orford. His background, we'll just move that down here. Dave McCutcheon, he's up north in Port Orford, and he has experience with glass-bottom boats, and so that's something that he'd like to see. Lori Van Zant, Lori is, I think she's an all-star here in the county. Everyone knows who Lori is, and of course, what she brings to the table. And then our newest member, Sam Waller, who's now taking the seat for a central seat. So those are our committee members. And all of them, they're fantastic to work with. They all bring, you know, a plethora of skills to our committee. We have promotions, we have business owners. So there's a lot of investment in there. So we'll bring up a little slideshow here real quick. Just to sort of give you an idea of what we've been doing. Okay. So how are we promoting Cree County tourism? So the first thing that we were able to do, and this was right after some of the COVID restrictions were lifted, was the Dying to Stay program. We invested $15,000 in Dying to Stay. And it was to sort of give a boost to all of our restaurants that were hurting at the time. And it was actually a really successful program. How much was it?
$78,000.
Yeah, $78,000 actually invested. That came out of that $15,000 investment, along with the city of Brookings, who actually partnered with us, and T-Soc as well. So one of the other things that we were able to do right before going down sick was our festivals. So we found that it would be very important to be sort of the face of tourism for Cree County, and to have a booth at the festivals, so that we can sort of get the word out about who we are and what we do. So the festivals that we did actually do and participate in, oops, last year was Azalea Festival, the Cree County Fair, the Pirates Festival, and the Festival Art in the Park. And that's, that's our setup here. This was at the county fair. So what we did there was, we gave away some stuff, and provided some brochures on the county. The next thing that we did during the summer and the fall was our partnership with Oregon, Akba, and T-Soc again. And this was with Good Day Oregon, KPTV. Stephanie, I can't really pronounce that last name, I'll probably, Kovalitch. She came in, she's actually someone from KPTV. They did a whole thing up and down from Brookings to Coos. And so we provided some places where she could go. And then you can certainly watch that there. If you guys have time, I would suggest watching. It's about three minutes long, but it's a great little piece about the south coast here. The next campaign was the Fall in Love campaign. This was again in partnership with Travel Southern Oregon Coast, and this was for fall 2021. The campaign message was "Fall in Love Again." So for instance, here, this creative was "Fall in Love with Port Orford." We had "Fall in Love with Brookings," "Fall in Love with Gold Beach," "Fall in Love with Food Again." So there was a huge amount of creative media that we put out on social media, and it was both paid and organic.
Are you thinking about like a Fall in Love with your county commissioners?
Well, we are coming up on Valentine's Day, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
We might even do a calendar.
Centerfold?
Oh my.
Carry on, carry on.
Okay.
I need a break.
So we recently finally, what we were hoping to do back in August was start our publications. With me being out sick, we did finally get to that in November. So here we are, insider of Southern Oregon. It's a half-page ad, Travel Creek Coast. This here, this is a QR code. If you scan it with your phone camera, it takes you directly to our website for Travel Creek Coast. So our message here is Powered by Nature, and our tagline is Unplugged to Reconnect. This is a full-page ad in Southern Oregon Magazine that we've recently done. So it says, "Come traverse the Oregon Creek Coast and unearth what has inspired generations of artists, writers, and nature's lovers alike." So this, I loved partnering with a local photographer. We were able to, of course, partner with, and we ended up rightly so, paying for the image to use in this magazine. His name's Calvin Casey, if anyone knows who he is. The next one that we actually have on deck currently is with Oregon Golf and Travel. It'll be a full-page ad, and it's going to highlight both Salmon Run and Cedar Bend Golf Courses. This one here is just a mock-up, so it's not finalized just yet, but this one will be out for publishing soon. So future publications, we are in negotiations with several publications currently. Our goal is really to advertise the nature-based products that we have here as a destination. So fishing magazines, outdoor travel, cycling, hiking, and just to name a few. So we're pretty poised right now to get into magazines for the year. I think we're, like I said, we're in negotiations with several publications. I'm excited, it's putting us on the map. We're becoming, you know, that destination that everyone wants to see. We're a little hard to get to, but once you're here, it's worth it.
Gotcha.
So these were some of the brochures that we did in 2021. This was a trifle that we ended up doing. That was for the summer. This is the new one that's on deck, this will be for 2021. And that's what that one looks like. I partnered with our aquatic safety, Luke Martinez. So as Summer sort of touched on, Luke is sometimes the face of, you know, Cree County. And, you know, I asked him, you know, how can we better support you? How can we, because he was actually handing out our trifles to begin with. And so he talked about wanting to have a little information as well. And I said, well, that's great, let's do it. So we did a card here, this card stock. And so it gives, again, the information for our tourism website, Travel Creek Coast. I created a webpage for Luke, for aquatic safety on our website. So he has his own QR code to go to as well. And it gives information here on the back of what we would recommend. And this was all sort of curated information that he got from his partners as well. What to do when you're first arriving at the beach, and then, of course, rip currents, and what that looks like. And if anyone has any other, more information, they could always go to his webpage, just with a QR code. So we partnered with him, and again, he's sort of the face, first face of a lot of interaction. So we thought he would be a great brand ambassador.
Bigfoot with a life jacket on.
I'm telling you, one day I'm going to make that guy a mascot. So our future marketing campaigns, we're currently, right now, working in the, in the process, working with Madden Marketing Company and Sparkoff Media for our winter through spring campaigns, that will cover some Google Ads, social media, video assets, and a carousel ad. So we look actually forward to sharing those when they're completed. But we are in the process all the time of hearing, you know, more partnerships throughout the region, through the state, so. And this one came down through Travel Oregon. So that's basically where we're at as far as promoting. Again, not exactly where we would want to be at this time of the year. We are maybe about a month behind, but we're not far behind, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm good. I think we're good.
All right.
Good job, Miranda.
I'm going to introduce Leslie again, our chair for our committee. She's going to tell you a little bit about the committee.
Welcome, Leslie.
Hello, good afternoon. I want to let you know that I started on this committee somewhere before, after, during, whatever that is in COVID. And we met once or twice, and that was kind of the end of it. We started firing back up here on May of this year, and I walked in and found out shortly thereafter that I was going to be chair. Worked for me, better to let me be in charge, I think, right, Henry? Than not. But I also have some big ambitions. And the first thing that came to mind is that we needed to get the strategic plan going. And I was adamant, and I know that Summer and Miranda both were about getting an outside person to come in, an outside company. So that starts kicking off tomorrow. It's the goal to have that strategic marketing plan in place and rolling in June. That is the goal. If I have anything to say about it, it will, it will be met, for sure. The other thing that is going on, that's a personal kind of thing for me, is that I want to get some of that money out, the committee does, out to events that are trying to fire back up. But we know that we can't really get a grant program in place, as much as I wanted to do it now, until we get the strategic marketing plan going. So we will be discussing on January 24th at our Zoom meeting, that starts at 4:00, some alternatives. And the first alternative that we're going to kick around is putting campaigns together, like Miranda's already showed you, that will feature events. And so perhaps a hotel would be able to offer a 10% discount if the individual presents a ticket from Nature's Coastal Holiday, for example. Something like that. And those campaigns would advertise the events that were going on. And there's lots of other items that we can do. We could probably do a, you know, buy-two-nights hotel discount, if a hotel wants to get involved in that campaign. So we'll be talking about that on the 24th. I think that that's pretty much where we're at. As Miranda has told you, COVID dealt not only a blow for tourism, it dealt a blow internally for the Economic Development Department. So we're trying to do some catch-up. Do you have any questions of me? I will say one other thing, though, I forgot. I have invited Commissioner Herzog to be there at our 24th meeting, our January 24th meeting, because he is our liaison. And it's my goal that we have a relationship, gentlemen. If there's a question or a concern to our committee, for our committee, you can feel free to email me or call me at any time, and that information, contact information is ready, available. I want to make sure that this works for Cree County. This is my home now.
Yep.
It's your home, it's everybody's home here, and we've got a heck of a good deal here. Let's share it. Let's get some of that money out there. Let's plant little seeds, so things will grow, and really make it work. So please, keep in touch with me and ask any questions that you have. So do you have any today?
Any questions?
I think I'm okay, great job, Leslie.
You think you're okay? Okay, great, okay, thank you.
Thank you. See you the 24th.
Because if you don't, if you're not there, I'd be calling you.
I know you will.
You need to forward him that email you sent me Sunday afternoon, that was really good.
Okay, okay. Oh, you know, I did, I am going to take one other opportunity. Side note.
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, yeah. Hey, guess what's going on in Brookings this year? It's Love Your Fourth. And the person that's going to be chairing that fundraising event, and we're thinking we already have $30,000 for that, is Henry Johnson.
Hey, fireworks.
He's looking at me like, you didn't tell me this was going on. So Henry Johnson, who you may recognize as the manager of Fred Meyer's, took it upon himself to spearhead the fundraising campaign to put the fireworks back in Brookings Harbor. They have not been there for a while. So I want to say, that's Henry, you'll be seeing some more of him.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Anytime, chief.
Great job.
We'll pray for a clear sky. All right, let's, it's 3:00, a little after 3:00, let's take a 10-minute break. Be back here at 15:20, which is actually a 12-minute break. Be back here at, at 15:20, which is actually a 12-minute break.
There's a shelter pet who wants to meet you. Meet one today. Visit theshelterpetproject.org. Adopt.
Well, fire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the, the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire? Actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties. Essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in Southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr., and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. The first things is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District Three in Southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the, and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. Uh, it's, it's really an inspiring, um, showing of, of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our, of our land so that our future for us in generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching. And I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's, that's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. Um, we're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could hear. He and I stood on the riverbank blessing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter?
Then I'm going to jump in and then.
We're going to bring you up in just a minute here. I'm going to kind of set the stage here. We have a lot of people wanting to speak. Hang on just one moment. So this might take a minute, but we have a full hour and it's important. And, uh, I want to thank the board for setting this workshop up today. Uh, yeah, Mr. Zaner, we're going to have you introduce, uh, we have some distinguished speakers here. Uh, just so the public knows, Measure 110, the Oregon Drug Addiction Treatment and Recovery Act, basically legalized marijuana use, recreational marijuana use. That was in 2015. The Oregon voters passed that by referendum. The purpose to make, and this is real important, um, and this is what our discussion will be centered around today, to make screening, health assessment, treatment, and recovery services for drug addiction available to all those who need and want access to those services. And to adopt a health approach to drug addiction by removing criminal penalties for low-level drug possession. When we pass the ballot measure, the people of Oregon recognize drug, drug addiction and overdoses are a serious problem in our state and that Oregon needs to expand access to drug treatment. A health-based approach to addiction and overdose is more effective, humane, and cost-effective than criminal punishments. Now, I'm reading from the measure. Making people criminals because they suffer from addiction is expensive, ruins lives. Also, making people criminal makes access to treatment and recovery more difficult. I have a side note here, and I, and I said this back in December when I first brought this before the board. And after that, boy, did I get the emails. Very polite, respectful, but beneficial.
Okay, you're ready?
No. Someone's trying to get your attention.
Yeah.
So, uh, now we have the industrialization of marijuana. And we see, I don't care what anybody says, marijuana is a gateway drug. And, uh, certainly not everybody becomes addicted, but our kids, the facts are, one in every five or six that tries it ends up addicted. So it is a policy of Oregon that screening, health assessment, treatment, and recovery services for drug addiction are available to all those who need and want access to those services. The initial measure required the Oregon Health Authority to establish six goals, and I think these are worthy goals. A treat, number one, a treatment and recovery services fund financed with marijuana revenues to fund new addiction recovery centers and community access to care grants. Number two, 15, 24/7, 365 addiction recovery centers throughout the state by October 1st, 2021. Third, a grant, a grants program to support the addiction recovery centers. For a second grant program to increase access to community-based services. Number five, an in, an oversight and accountability council to oversee the distribution of the grants with OHA providing technical, logistical, and all other necessary supports to the council. Finally, a 24/7 telephone addiction recovery center by February 1st of, uh, 2021. Um, and this is another point I made, uh, five weeks ago. Uh, I could be wrong, but I don't recall the citizens voting on programs. Anything, for example, regarding deal exchanges. And I, I think we're going to learn about that today, and I'm glad to, very glad to have you and, and some of your representatives here. But that really got the citizens' attention. In Curry County, they're going, I didn't know. That's scary. How do, you know, so how does that affect our kids and our law enforcement, all of the above? Um, so it included the six objectives just that I just referenced there. And, uh, again, the concern for many Oregon citizens. None of these categories, in my view, suggests to a lot of citizens that the referenced drug addiction enabling programs often have been the result and of course, the unintended consequences. It is about treatment, therapy, rehabilitation, rescuing could even be an appropriate word. Also, as I stated a month ago, we do know substance, substance abuse addictions nationwide are far worse. And you can double check these statistics, are far worse than coronavirus. More deaths than gun violence and car accidents combined. I think we've learned from the metropolitan areas, uh, the data, the history is right, right here. Uh, you know, these, I think the concerns that the citizens have and the reason I want to bring this before the board and the public because when you have injection sites, the data shows that eventually brings in drug dealers and drug dealings, and later on it brings violence. Uh, and so that's, that's what I want to guard against here. And that's why I'm dedicated to learning all I can. People don't want this in their neighborhoods. Just about done, Mr. Chair. For us, most would agree it's coming to rural Oregon sooner or later. Um, we would not have been having this conversation even five years ago. What are we going to be discussing five years from now? Um, the good news, the answer is there is so much funding out there for mental and behavior, behavioral health in the state. And, uh, with the help of everybody in this room and others, we can, we can position ourselves to compete for those funds. All the, you, you, uh, the first of December, we had a, uh, health, Curry Health Update with, uh, Curry Health Network and Advanced Health, All Care Health, Coast Community Health. Uh, OHA was well represented. And so, you know, I, I feel like one of my jobs is to try and bring all those people together so we can compete for those funds and get these people treatment. Um, back to the marijuana issue, and I'll conclude here. Um, here's just some of the headlines, uh, when it comes to, when it comes to pot and the irresponsible use. Uh, Oregon Promise Grant, Financial Aid for Oregon Community. Uh, I will elaborate beyond that, but Oregon's Pot Production Problems. Uh, something, and next one, Something Not Right in Southern Oregon. Alarm at Rise of Pot Was Legalized for Recreational Use in Oregon in 2015. And it was passed, by the way, by a fairly significant margin, making it legal for any person to grow up to four plants. Now, though, large pot farms with armed bosses. And Southern Oregon is right smack in the middle of that. A wash, and the next one, A Washington Illegal Pot Farms, Oregon Plans Millions for Relief. County in Oregon Seeking Seven Million to Tackle Illegal Pot. Uh, November 12th, just, uh, 2021. Southern Oregon is the tip of the so-called Emerald Triangle, a pot-growing region that includes Northern California. We don't even want to discuss what's going on in California right now. People missing, uh, it's, it's unbelievable. A good friend of mine, I went to school with, Marty, it was Mark Gergman, said he'll never go back to Mendocino County. He and his wife love to go there, but it is unbelievably scary. We don't want that here with all the efforts we're putting into tourism promotion. And finally, uh, back in late November, White City, by far the largest bust in illegal marijuana in Oregon history, 500,000 pounds with a street value of a half a billion dollars. Um, so, uh, welcome. We've got some work to do. Very glad to have you here. Uh, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I would like to turn the meeting over to him. And, uh, uh, we have, I, I believe we have people here wanting to give information kind of both sides of this. So welcome, Mr. Zaner.
Well, just, and before you start, sir, just, so that, that is, public comments will be, you know, just raise your hand, get my attention. And after the, you know, then we can come, you'll come to the mic and we'll, you have, you can have an opportunity without filling out a piece of paper for public comments.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, if, as you come to the podium, you need to adjust the microphone so, uh, they, we get maximum use out of them there. And so we're going to give your group about 35, 40 minutes. I think you are okay with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for listening.
My name's Dane. I got to be him and his pronouns. I'm with HIV Alliance. And I'm going to introduce Renee. And then we have Aaron, Gillian, and Jerry, if you want to come in too. And we're, I know I was communicating with Commissioner Boyce, and, uh, he had advocated wanting some education on harm reduction and Measure 110. And that's what we're hoping to do here today. I'll facilitate the slides for Renee, if you wanted to get it, go ahead and get started. But we're going to talk a little bit about the principles of harm reduction, our harm reduction issues.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, Dane. I can't see the slides that you're showing. I don't know if that's something I need to do on my end, but I can just go along with the slides on my side and, and tell you when to switch there. But, um, I just really wanted to share a little bit, I, you know, I thought it would be helpful to have a little basics about what is harm reduction. Um, because there are, there's a wide variety of things that fall under that harm reduction umbrella, but really kind of understanding what that means to provide harm reduction services. And then Dane can tell you a little bit about what we are specifically doing. And then we have, um, Gillian to talk about a peer project on the Oregon coast, and Jerry to talk about their work. And of course, Aaron to talk about the connection with the patient population that they serve. So, oh, there we go. Awesome. Um, so you can go ahead there, Dane, or whoever's got the slides there.
I think they're trying to fix it, Renee, so that you can show the slides.
Okay. Oh, well, that, that's, that's, I forgot to, um, mention Lieutenant Henley.
We also need.
So we hope to be here to, to talk today.
Hey, Eric, could you turn the volume down just a little?
Very simply.
Is Joel here?
Go back one slide to that, that second slide there. Yeah, I think we can start here. So, um.
That's pretty good.
In very simple terms, you know, harm reduction is really just as it sounds. It is, these are interventions that can reduce harm from the things we do. You could really think about it, you know, in a daily life sort of way. And so some examples of things we do to reduce harm, um, potentially harmful or risky things that we all do are shown here in these pictures. But, you know, one, I always talk about, you know, people, all of us, you know, probably work on improving our diet or exercising more, or these other behavior changes. And if, we all know that it can be very difficult to change behaviors. Um, but we can do things to reduce the harms of the behaviors. So I have a sweet tooth. I, I know that I do, and I, I should, you know, do better with that. But I try to, you know, I brush my teeth, I drink a lot of water. There's things I do to reduce the harm of sugar and sweets that I, that I love to eat. Um, so it, it basically, harm reduction interventions are things that are very practical. They're very evidence-based, so they're looking at things that are effectively, um, reducing the negative consequences of, of some of the behaviors. They provide a continuum of services and are generally very responsive to both community and, um, say, consumer needs, so the folks that are utilizing the service. Harm reduction really seeks to reduce stigma, so kind of address the stigma that people experience when, um, they may be combating addiction or dealing with addiction. And in, in reducing stigma, we can help, uh, support people in engaging in care, right? When people aren't feeling stigmatized or fearful about accessing care, then, um, we see better outcomes for folks. So there it increases engagement. And then generally, these are services and things that improve public and individual health. So Dane's going to talk a lot about our syringe exchange, but I also consider, you know, the peers that we utilize to be part of harm reduction service. And Gillian's going to talk a little bit about those folks. But the work of, of that combined effort of syringe exchange and, and the peers, it does improve individuals' health. Yes, syringe exchange is incredibly effective prevention for HIV, Hep C, and other injection-related, um, issues, and then thereby improving public health. So it really, uh, harm reduction, a core tenet of harm reduction is to meet folks where they're at, um, but not to leave them there. Um, it's a belief in and a respect for people, all people. And so even people who, you know, are struggling with addiction have, um, rights. are struggling with addiction have rights and responsibilities, but are valuable and valued in the harm reduction model. It's, you know, very low threshold and convenient, evidence-based, again, but I think that the low threshold and convenience is very important part of harm reduction. So you're really trying to build a relationship with folks who often have burned, you know, some bridges, may not be engaging in healthcare or other systems that, that they could benefit from. You want that to be very low threshold so that you can build that trust and relationship with them. You can let them know that you value them, that you aren't going to stigmatize them, and therefore, you know, kind of help them to the next step on the path for them to wellness. And it is very client-centered and honest service, you know, so we really are not pretending like drug use is harmless, or that it doesn't harm the communities or families in Oregon or, or anywhere, but, but that we do value the individual and want to help them be well. So it is not, though, it is not anything goes. So harm reduction doesn't mean, you know, anything goes, we accept any behavior, we condone, endorse, or encourage drug use or high-risk behaviors. That is not what harm reduction is about. And again, I think it's really important, because what I hear so often in meetings like this is about the really very real and legitimate pain and, and challenges that, that drug use can present in communities. And, and it's not, we're not attempting or trying to minimize that. We all recognize the harms are serious and real for people and communities. And we don't exclude or dismiss abstinence-based treatment models. I think, you know, the thing about harm reduction is that it's very inclusive, and if a person is client-centered. So if a patient or a person that we're working with wants to engage in 12-step, then 12-step is what we would ask, we would help them to access. If they would prefer a different kind of a model, medication-assisted treatment, we can help them access that. And that is, you know, because addiction is so unique to the person in some ways, they really have to lead the recovery as well. So some, thank you. Some examples of harm reduction initiatives are syringe exchange, which we'll talk a little bit more about, peer recovery specialists, which I've had a chance to talk to a couple folks who are there today about the, the benefit of using peer recovery specialists. Wound care, and so this is something helping people who are coming to syringe exchange to address infections that they may have. HIV and Hep C testing, so we can provide free testing to everyone that comes to our syringe exchange, and in that way, we can very quickly connect people with HIV and Hep C to treatment and care services that they need. And that is not only an incredible benefit to that person who will then not have their disease progress, but also will be less likely to transmit if we get them treated or cured in the case of Hep C. We have Hep C community health workers, and they're very focused on folks who are living with Hep C. We also have HIV case management, and we have been providing HIV peer coordination and nursing services to Curry County, people living with HIV for many years. We can also provide naloxone and overdose prevention, and Commissioner Boyce spoke to the incredible loss that, you know, our nation has experienced related to overdose, and we are able to address that through, through education and naloxone. We have, in some, in Lane County, we have what's called a trans needle exchange, so this is for folks who identify as transgender and are using syringes for hormones. And then we have community drop boxes, and, you know, that is because we want to make sure that folks can safely dispose of syringes. And we collect syringes in these drop boxes beyond those that we provide to folks, so we are collecting syringes from folks, you know, who have diabetes or other reasons that they're medically using syringes. So this slide is kind of talking about, and it is looking at other counties, Marion and Multnomah primarily, but these, these stats apply to the entire state. So Oregon carries a very heavy burden for Hep C, and Gillian might speak about this a little bit, or Aaron in their, in their piece, but, you know, about 5,000 people with, get a, have a Hep C positive test result each year, and Hep C hospitalizations have increased threefold from 2007 to 2009. I don't think we've seen a huge, huge change in that. That continues to be a heavy burden for Oregon. And the average cost, which I think is really pretty incredible here, this is for a Hep C-related, you know, hospitalization, is over 26, almost 27,000. Now, this was a few years ago, so I'm sure that that has gone up, and given the burden of our healthcare system during the pandemic, this is even more of a challenge. But I think, you know, this slide is really just speaking to the fact that it, that syringe exchange can prevent Hep C, and that that is cost-effective, that is compassionate for the people living with Hep C or at risk for Hep C, but also a benefit to all of us across the state. So that, those are the, all the slides that I have, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dane, but before I do, I just, are there any questions for me, or, you know, you can feel free to ask them throughout too, but.
I'm good.
Questions?
I'll wait for now, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to you, Dane, if you want to cover, you know, sort of our syringe exchange harm reduction services.
Awesome. Well, again, my name's Dane, and I am Southern Oregon's Prevention and Harm Reduction Manager, and I oversee Douglas, Kuz, Curry, and Josephine. A few tidbits of information on a drop box program we collected last year in Kuz County with three drop boxes, 216,000 syringes for that community. And that was out of fire department, sponsored some drop boxes with Advanced Health funding those. And so that's a key thing that we can do, and we destroy those syringes that are collected there. That is heavy diabetic, but there's also injection drug syringes, so it helps clean up a community, but that is huge. But we-
Could you repeat that? You said Kuz County.
216,000 syringes in Kuz County that were-
Was that for one year?
That was one year.
Thank you very much.
They don't have a disposal mechanism, so the fire department's offered to put drop boxes in, and I think that's key in like cleaning up their community, you know, then diabetics, or anybody with a medical need for syringe. They don't have a disposal access, but also people that inject drugs drop their syringes off. That's where we encourage people that use our service if they're not bringing them back. We are one-for-one. You know, as far as going down this slide, naloxone, that's a key resource that we do. We do community trainings. We've, I've been working with Lieutenant Hensley for several years, and getting naloxone to police officers is the way to save lives. But we do community trainings, we do agency trainings, and most importantly, most of our 820 lives that were saved last year were by people that actively use injection drugs, getting naloxone and resources from us. There's no cost to this. There's no cost to any of our programs. We do one-for-one exchange with a little bit of flexibility. We want to, if somebody comes in new, we're going to set them up for that next week. You know, I think we've been doing syringe exchange for, in this county for, since about 2016. We originally did once a month. We were going into Brookings using Curry Community Health. It doesn't work for our clients, knowing what Wednesday a month you're going to come to town. So we started in this last, two years ago, we started doing weekly services in Brookings. We were doing Gold Beach, and then we pulled up to Port Orford, working with Coast Community Health up there. So we have those two locations, do, we do a weekly service 10 to 12 every Tuesday. And I've got, I've got some flyers up there, but we, one of the things we do when somebody comes in for a syringe exchange, we want to encourage how often they, they test it. We want to get a base point for them for an HIV, Hep C, and we actually do a syphilis test. We want to provide them the overdose prevention, but we don't want them reusing that equipment. As Renee mentioned, it's very costly. It's about $60,000 to treat hepatitis C. And in the end, that comes back to us paying for those costs. So if we can reduce new infections around hepatitis C, we actually got two screens last week for hepatitis C reactive. We had four overdoses reported through syringe exchange in Brookings, which is concerning, you know? So the good thing is, those people reverse those overdoses. But a lot of people think, don't realize and think about the things when somebody comes in. One of the questions we ask each and every person, would you like some resource around treatment? You know, what does that look like? I actually put two of those in here. We use ADAPT where we can, but Boulder Care is great down here, is an online program that came during COVID, and then OHSU. HRBR is another online resource for treatment, and those are the first things, if somebody says yes to that, it's an encouragement, you know? I mean, that we're not pushing that on them, we want to safeguard them, and we know people have to be at a certain point before they want treatment, but if they want treatment, we want to connect them to that care. But we also want to connect them to medical care. If we screen somebody for HIV and Hep C, HIV's easy, we run a case management program, and so we can connect them to care immediately. Hepatitis C, we just kind of know which doctors, Dr. Silverman in Brookings, we know we can send somebody there, they can get their blood work done, they can get their treatment started. Syphilis, same thing. Fentanyl test strips, they're good. They're a harm reduction mechanism to let them test before they inject and understand there is a prevalence of fentanyl in their drugs. We have taught methamphetamine users in the state of Oregon, or at least in our counties, that they are at risk of an opioid overdose, and they need to carry naloxone. It's being intermixed, and they don't know how much, they don't know when. We just use precautionary measures. Your methamphetamine is probably an opioid, and it really could risk an overdose there. But we ask each and every client about the testing, the naloxone resources. You know, this next slide just kind of shows, there's our nasal kit, that's usually for community members, police officers. We got our injection kit, they come with two to four doses. The Sharps container, everybody that comes in walks out with a Sharps container to bring back at their next visit. So we're actually removing those syringes that we disperse into the community. The fentanyl, and it's just kind of showing how powerful it is and how little can kill somebody. You know, we're, we have multiple different syringes available for our clients that usually will tell us what they would like. We want them to have the alcohol wipes, the waters, everything and every resource. You know, this is some of our pictures. This is me working with BAF. We have our treatment resources. Harmony actually put that together, the Oregon Drug Law, just kind of help people understand. That's when we were at Curry Community Health at Airport Way. These are just some pictures, our resources. A lot of them are donated or funded by different agencies, but as you can see, our Sharps containers, the Sharps, and then the resources around treatment and different safe injection information that we have available, and we're encouraging people to test. And that naloxone is available to community members. When we were doing the library of in Port Orford, we were doing, many, every community member was asked, would you like naloxone? And a majority said, yeah, let, let's train. It's very easy and quick, and they get their naloxone. And, you know, we've used St. Timothy's for testing. We're now using the Curry Resource Center. We've been working with Tony for many years now, and it's just a, with, when we're in an establishment like Curry Community Health, sometimes our clients are a little bit reluctant to come in. This is just a low barrier, using churches is another way. St. Timothy's, we just test and offer naloxone. We don't do syringe exchange, that's not a program there. We just know a population, I've worked with Bernie for many years on testing people and letting them know what their HIV and Hep C status is and making sure they're carrying naloxone. This is our different resources, different partnerships we've done. We did a library tour with Kate Frame when she was with Advanced Health, and hit different libraries in community. We partnered with Curry Community Health to do, that's when we actually started training the Sheriff's Department, I think we hit every police department here in the community. When we do those community trainings, we're actually letting people know, I have my slides that show them what we do and when we come to town. It's kind of a community education at the same time to let people know, hey, here's some resources. If you didn't get naloxone today, come on by, we can set you up with naloxone then. That slide, I'm just going to skip. I want to turn it over to Gillian. It's all yours, Gillian, and I'll move your slide if you just want to tell me when you want me to move them.
That sounds great, thank you. So I'm here as support specialist, and we provide support to a, to manage the voice of the Oregon Health Authority and the community partners, the ECP clients, Gary. And what I'm talking about-
We're not, we're not hearing, hearing her well enough.
Peer Recovery Specialist?
Maybe get a little closer microphone, I'm not sure. We're not hearing you very well, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I'll try to hold it.
That's better. That's better.
Okay. Oh, you have a try. So, this is a peer recovery specialist working in tech, and this is a thing of working on Hep C, Oregon Health Authority, expecting high-
It's not working.
And so that's operating use of the, among, uh, that's what I'm working on.
Oh, boy, no.
Go ahead and switch to the next slide.
Can you, what's her name?
Renee, Aaron, I was wondering if you two are muted, maybe that's, Gillian, we're still having a hard time hearing you a little bit.
Or maybe turn off your, because we're not seeing you anyway, maybe turn off your camera, and that'll put more to your-
Sorry about that.
It's all right. But it wasn't, can't listen to that.
I'll try to speak up a little too.
Yeah, that's better. That's better.
Okay.
It was you, Eric. You did it.
Okay, you can start and switch to the next slide.
Uh-oh.
Maybe go a little slow, might, might help us follow you better.
Okay, so the Oregon Hope study is, there are eight sites around the country, and the partners in Oregon are OICU, OIC, Comergen, Eastside, UNE, Gary, 12. So this is in Kuz, Curry, and two other rural communities. Let's go ahead and switch to the next slide. So the peer model is for Oregon Hope. This is a rural intervention, a peer support specialist, provide harm reduction tools and education in naloxone and general provisions, testing and treatment for hepatitis C, peer support services. And the peer specialists are people who are in long-term recovery, they get their credential by the C, and they're trained to do harm reduction and connect people to treatment and recovery. Go ahead and switch to the next slide. So peers reach out to people who may be at risk because of us and use, are very interested in C, indeed, people who may not be ready for treatment, but may be ready to start taking steps on the pathway toward recovery. They provide the supplies, like naloxone, syringes, help people get enrolled in, in OIC so they can access treatment, and connect people to local resources. The goal is to support people to reach their goals, and oftentimes, that gives many steps, as Renee has mentioned, that changes. Let's go ahead and switch to the next slide for Curry County. So in Curry County, the peer services are provided by Bay Area 12, which is the Oregon Health Service Provider, and Bay Area 12 peers, part and really HIV Alliance, to provide the harm reduction supplies, work within these facilities, and they offer non-outreach, I mean, people who would not be used to these steps. The funding comes from a few places, Oregon Hope, a project called Prime Plus, and there's some, and one time some as well. Let's go ahead and switch to the next slide. So why is peer harm reduction services? So the reason behind this, I think Renee and Dane already spoke to harm reduction effectiveness, the question that we, for, it's implemented and spending for many decades. It's been a, I just, so we've seen, we have halfwayed treatment. The primary goal is to keep people alive so that they are, can access treatment and recovery. The positive benefits shown is to be across the world and across the age, so the harm reduction services, life-saving service program, reduce overdose death, infectious disease risk and drug use. They facilitate access to health and services, and they're cost-effective and it's measured relative to hepatitis C or other infectious disease treatments. I did mention here, so is some question around the negative consequences, which is also a study. So concerns about increases in criminal crime or attract non-resident and people who use drugs have not been held up. So in contradiction, some of these negative concerns have been shown not to occur from a digital card, like increasing in crime or attract people from out of the, so those are not on here, but go ahead and switch to the next slide. So peer specialists who use harm reduction approach, they, next to people who might not be ready for treatment, might already thinking about treatment, they ask people what their most pressing needs are, and help them identify- and help them identify the issues before they become critical, before they resolve an emergency care and help them break some of the barriers people have in their lives, seeking recovery, that's for many. Um, when people are, are on the house or have other barriers to take steps, those are the kinds of things that peer recovery specialists know how we got to. All right, let's go ahead and switch to the next slide. I'm not sure, um, this is what we learned within the Oregon Hope study. So, so, um, there's five studies that so far, again, this has been those rural counties, the central, the five rural counties. In the past, they, we asked them, um, at enrollment, when they first started getting involved, how they knew what had been going on in their life. And seventy-two percent had reported they had experienced some level of health or some problems in the past month. Thirty-two percent have been incarcerated. Um, seventy-eight percent in the past thirty days had been affected by the pandemic. I think that's where it's going to go. So you can see that we're reaching people who have a lot or not otherwise that have a lot, very high, go ahead and switch to the next slide. Um, there, the people in, that are reached by harm reduction services are also high-risk for infection. Um, a third had shared injection supplies in the past thirty days. And forty-four percent tested hepatitis C positive, so some states are not, not know they were positive. They were high overdose, um, the majority had witnessed an overdose, about half had overdose. So again, that's a good course of the reasoning why and the purpose to provide access to syringes and rapid testing, to decrease disease transmission and decrease overdose. Go ahead and switch to the next slide. So here we're going to focus on who's in Curry for this specifically. There were two hundred and three, um, Curry participants at the point we listed. And when they enrolled, fifty-one percent had received no medical care in the past test. And the top reasons they avoided care, um, were reasons related to feeling disrespected, they discerned that they, they depressed access, they had been treated poorly in the past by doctors or clinic staff, and some didn't have specifications. And so these are all the things that the peer specialists can connect and do. It helps people connect care when there's a lot of mis-trust. There's a lot of reasons why people are not connected to care and why they might trust harm reduction providers. They consider the peer providers more than they trust, um, the available care when it's out there. So they help connect care, but peers often depend upon each other, um, whether it's medical treatment or treatment. Have doctors used, both participants have received treatment previously, so much, well, had some experience with treatment. Um, about twelve percent had tried to get treatment in the past six months but weren't able to. And this shows there is relapse, um, is a part of recovery and people do these safe supports during the periods when they're using. Um, and so whether peer support people are staying safe when they're using, are staying alive, and then are there for them to lead them to recovery when they're ready. Um, you can go ahead and switch. This is a quick slide to show you all of the different services that the peer support specialists are providing to people with expertise. They're providing crisis and emotional support, goal setting, naloxone, talking to them about, exploring all those, what they might be risking. And then a whole host of other issues about connecting them with medical, medical points of view, education, attainment, journalism, and so on. I'm going to go ahead and, do not switch to the last slide here. Um, this is a, a peer recovery specialist visiting the harm reduction approaches in rural Oregon, part of the connected to this network of Oregon Hope and Hope Plus peers. Um, the quote is from a peer, "I've been allowed to see firsthand what this can do for people. I had a young client in, they had relapse. They had overdosed sixteen times before when they used it in the past. They're hurting, embarrassed, ashamed, and completely alone now. Because of this, organization needs supplies, resources, and teams. My client left with a pocket full of supplies that will help them stay alive until they're ready for the next step on it. They have tears in their eyes when they told me I've never had anyone take care of me when I'm hurting." And that's all I have to share.
Thank you. We have two speakers left. Mr. Zoner?
Yes, we do. Jerry.
We have three then. We have Erin Porter?
Yes, Erin's in action then.
So we have three. Okay, thank you.
Hi Jerry.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back.
Howdy. My pleasure to be here and I'm, are your heads about ready to explode? A lot of data, a lot of information.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try to keep my comments pretty simple and straightforward. Harm reduction for us is a little different than it is for HIV Alliance, although we've partnered with them for about ten years or so, since they started offering services in Southern Oregon. They've been a great partner for us because they have relationships with people that we don't have a relationship with yet. Uh, they're reaching them and, and where they are now, and we're trying to be available for them to connect later if they decide to engage in treatment. That's a great benefit for us. Uh, Measure 110, uh, that you've talked about a little bit earlier, talks about, um, addiction recovery centers in the original draft or original measure that was passed. That language changed as the state tried to piece this all together. Frankly, we didn't know what it meant when it first was passed. Nobody did. And they developed a system, a group of people in order to decide what that was. They ultimately changed the name because there's a program called the ARC, A R C, down in Medford. They decided it was a bad idea to kind of have one, that idea kind of carried throughout the state because it was confusing. And they liked the idea of a behavioral health resource network better. The confusion about calling this an addiction recovery center makes it sound like a building. And everybody's thinking about it in terms of a building, but it was never meant, as far as I understand, and certainly in its final draft was not meant to be a building. It's meant to be a network. There's existing providers who are already providing services. The idea wasn't to replace that, although at first we weren't sure about that. So frankly, we weren't exactly sure where OHA was going with this. But ultimately, what they came down to was building networks of providers who are able to provide a range of services. And that's where they settled. Uh, there's been a number of grant opportunities built around this. Uh, we've applied, uh, for some of those grants in each county, including Curry County. And we are, um, looking forward to building, uh, a behavioral health resource network here to provide services for people who want to engage in treatment. What that means for us, it's a little different than what existed before, is having people doing more outreach outside the four walls. Traditionally, uh, treatment centers are inside the four walls and we're there when they're ready and when they show up. Uh, but instead, that's this whole Measure 110 idea is to push us outside the four walls and go to them where they are, which frankly is a better approach. Um, be working with peers from HIV Alliance, from, uh, Brookings, uh, Co-Response, and others in the community, uh, who are working with people who are, uh, at risk of drug use and try to build a relationship. And when they're ready, bring them in for treatment. Um, if they're not ready, we bring them in for something else. Uh, the idea is to basically try to improve their health. That's what harm reduction is to us. So HIV Alliance has been a great partner for that. Again, they have relationships that we don't have and we're looking to work together to be able to build the treatment that people need. That's, that's what this is all about. Unfortunately, the way that this was put together also broke a system that was working pretty good through the correction system that brought people in that didn't necessarily want to get into treatment, but were motivated in order to help at least try it out. And for many people, that led to, um, recovery, frankly. Um, now we have to build a different system that's based more on reaching people where they are and bringing them in when they're ready. So that's what Measure 110 is about. Pretty straightforward. I wish it was that simple, but, uh, it's, it's going to be complicated. It's going to be messy, but, um, the state's put a lot of resource into this. And that's the exciting part. We haven't seen the state get behind resources for this kind of change, uh, certainly in my lifetime, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are, you are, uh-
Thank you. My name's Erin Porter. I'm the Behavioral Health Director with All Care Health. I will try to keep this short, sweet, and hopefully a little bit entertaining for you today. Um, really here to talk about costs associated with IV drug use and the cost saves that programs such as syringe exchange programs provide. Um, I can't put a cost on a life. I can tell you that there are a number of people that die every year from IV drug use, whether it's from overdose or whether it's from the medical complications caused from the IV drug use. But the loss of life isn't something that I can put a price tag on. Um, some of the common medical complications caused from IV drug use are soft, um, tissue and skin infections such as endocarditis, um, bacteremia and sepsis, and, um, osteomyelitis. Also like to say, I'm not a medical doctor. I am trained in mental health. So, um, bear with me as I put these into layman's terms. Endocarditis is a blood infection that is, um, prevalent with individuals who frequently engage in IV drug use because it, um, they are introducing or have the potential to introduce bacteria into their bloodstream as many times a day as they are injecting. And, uh, depending upon which drugs they are using and, uh, what their tolerance level is for those drugs can really make a difference in how frequently they are injecting. So if they are injecting using, um, unseen paraphernalia, they are significantly increasing their chances of developing some type of, um, of infection. Uh, bacteremia and sepsis, uh, is, bacteremia is just a medical way of saying an infection in the bloodstream or an infection in the blood. And sepsis is this chain reaction that your body will go through when it's having an extreme response to an infection and it is life-threatening. Endocarditis is also life-threatening and if not treated, um, may result in death within six weeks or less. Osteomyelitis is an infection within the bones or the joints. So those are really the infections that, um, are most frequently seen due to IV drug use that are bacterial or fungal in nature. Um, there is also, um, bloodborne diseases such as HIV and hepatitis which may also, uh, result from the use of, um, shared needles. And you'll see throughout my presentation, I have focused primarily on endocarditis because that is the data that I had for our area. Um, and I just tapped, said, I didn't have enough time to do research on everything possible, but it was fascinating. Um, so what I found was a twelve-month study conducted in Florida where, um, up until recently, they did not allow syringe exchanges. They did not allow harm reduction programs. And so some cost studies were done, uh, at some hospitals to determine what the cost of, um, of these services, of not having these types of services were. And so over the period of twelve months, they studied individuals who had a diagnosis, a, a soft, um, tissue or skin infection due to IV drug use. And individuals, um, seventeen percent of individuals presented with HIV, fifteen percent of individuals presented with Hep C, thirteen percent of individuals presented with endocarditis, and sixty-four percent of individuals presented with some sort of, um, tissue infection. Of that sixty-four percent, thirty-eight percent of those went on to develop endocarditis. And five percent of individuals died from these infections during this year. And so you can see here who the insurance carriers were and what the cost or the charge, um, was that was sent to each of those individuals or each of those insurance carriers over the course of the year. So you can see that ninety-two percent of, um, IV drug users were either uninsured or insured through a publicly funded, um, insurance such as Medicare or Medicaid. So this majority of these costs are falling, um, to taxpayers. And, and a very small amount falls back onto private insurance, which will also affect, um, every individual because it is going to increase private insurance costs. So let's go to the next slide, um, about, uh, local numbers. That's way more exciting than numbers in Florida. So what I have are the numbers for All Care Health. And, um, endocarditis, in two thousand and nineteen, we had four cases and the cost was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to All Care Health. And All Care Health covers Josephine Jackson Curry and a small section of Douglas County. And so that is the entire coverage area that these numbers are pulled from. In 2020, there were sudden cases with two hundred and fifty thousand, um, dollars worth of cost. And then in 2021, there is a sudden and dramatic drop in cases. And we see that there's only one and it's forty-eight thousand. So what we saw, what the correlation we saw is that between 2020 and 2021, HIV Alliance increased their hours of services at all of their sites and they added rural sites as well. I'm not, I can't claim that that's a causation. Um, I can't statistically stand on my, on my soapbox and say this, um, the increase of services provided by HIV Alliance caused the significant decrease in endocarditis in our area. Um, but there's certainly a, uh, correlation there. And, uh, and as we move forward, I hope that we continue to see that as more harm reduction provided, these medical expenses go down and the cost to the taxpayer goes down. The CDC states that individuals who engage in syringe exchange programs are five times more likely to enter into treatment. That's huge. And that those individuals are three times more likely to stop using, which is also huge. So these harm reduction programs are an introduction into treatment. They are a first step to being able to talk with individuals who approach from a non-judgmental point of view and provide support and genuine care, um, to these individuals. So there is a huge amount of, um, positive from these syringe exchange programs. That's what I've got for you today. The next slide is just the references that I pulled from, um, just in case somebody is as nerdy as I am and likes to re-research articles. Here's a couple for you. Uh, and I hope this is a little bit helpful.
Ms. Porter, we are glad you are in Curry County. Thank you. Good presentation.
And I think we have our last speaker, Lieutenant Joel Hensley.
Welcome, Lieutenant.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Herzog, Commissioners. Um, I overheard your opening statements, Commissioner Boyce, and I just wanted to clarify that what I am here to talk about are the benefits that I've received from harm reduction services that have come to the jail. Um, but your overall encompassing talk covers numerous, numerous topics and a lot of them are at the state or even national level that I don't know if we could handle here. However, my, my, my purpose is I just don't want us to shut any door on any funding or resources that can come to this county through this. Um, we have, uh, established a relationship with it. It was originally called the HIV Alliance. Now it's moved on to the Alliance. They provide us with Narcan training, how to use the Narcan. What was really helpful prior to COVID is they would come into the jail once or twice a month, offer free hep testing, free HIV testing. Then they would actually have a, a private consultation with the adult in custody afterwards about what that result meant, the negative, the positive, the risky behaviors they're engaging in and how this could be detrimental to them. If the person was willing to listen, they actually would provide a person for Suboxone. Um, I believe it's Dr. Silver. I might be talking out of turn. But how, where to find the resources after they left custody? And they weren't a parole probation officer. They were somebody separate. And it was, it's a, it's been a really good relationship for us. Um, I even had to reach out to them on numerous, not numerous, more than two occasions where I struggled to find medications for adults in custody. The Alliance was able to help me through that, through their channels and their resources. These harm reduction, um, programs and services, I find they've, they've established so many different relationships. They know how to get resources that I can't find. Um, so if we, if we are talking about banning all- if we are talking about banning all harm reduction dollars to this county under Measure 110, I think that'd have a huge negative impact on the ability for people to provide us services when we always complain about not having any services or any services available to us. I do work closely with, whenever Aaron was with Curry Community Health, now it's DAPD. But there's a niche there that can be filled by these harm reduction services that aren't with a county name, aren't going to report to the courts, that are not part of that, but they're willing to point them in the right direction. I haven't had a situation where an adult in custody came to me afterwards and said, hey, just met with the Alliance. I'm going to just go and use as many needles as I can. Sometimes they've come back and they've actually sat quietly and thought. And so to me, that means that's huge. So I'm not, I'm not the, and I'll save all, what I'm saying here is that everything that everybody wants to do, be great, perfect, yep, let's put them into schools, let's do this. I'm not about that. With the program here today, we're talking about if we do an ordinance or somehow refuse all $110 that are, they're going to go somewhere. The dollars are going to go somewhere. So if we refuse them to our county, what does that mean for the future? Does that mean that the state, the state level is not Curry County? Curry County is not the state. I understand that. What I'm saying though is that at the state level, they're going to see us not as being one to be a willing partner, to be part of the solution. If we can show the numbers that these paths that we're doing aren't working, well, then we can maybe turn it to where there is something to, we can make it to work. Does that make sense? Like if we can show to the state, like the phone number right now for the tickets for the methamphetamine, that there's a lot of studies going on about people receiving the de-vibration, are they actually calling getting services? Okay, where is that missing? Is there no longer a hammer for it to happen? So there's so many topics that were brought up in your initial statement. That's why I was just trying to touch on, Commissioner Boyce, because I think they're all very, very important. And I think the Sheriff's Office will definitely have some input in all those. But if it comes down to cutting all harm reduction dollars to the county, I do think there'll be some negative effect to it. Us at the Sheriff's Office do use them for the Narcan and the training, and also for the, to be able to point people in the direction for the hep testing, because they don't have doctor, no, let me rephrase that. A lot of them don't see a primary care physician.
So I've probably got 20 emails. None of them, from either side, have suggested that we stiff-arm any of the resources coming here. To the contrary, and you may have missed my part when I mentioned both on the 1st of December and today, the tremendous amount of resources that are available within the state and how we can compete for those. So my question to you would be, with your experience, who in the world spelled sheriff incorrect there?
Uh-oh. I didn't even notice that.
That would probably be me.
No. That takes a little credibility on there, so.
You didn't misspell Hensley, though, thank goodness. So, you know, actually, obviously, excuse me, the Sheriff's Department would have a key position in trying to determine, let's just say we had, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars that we could target for the treatment and improve our community through those kind of efforts. I mean, everybody would be involved, I would assume, in how to make that happen and the best use of those funds. So that's what, no, I haven't heard Lieutenant anyone say, oh, no, we're going to refuse these money. Not one person has said that. So thank you.
That's good news. And the hypothetical you threw out, sir, yes, I think it would be important to have all parties involved in that. Because I believe I'd know, similar to what the Sheriff's opinion would be about it, but then I think it would vary from what other people engage in this. People from All Care would have a totally different outtake. People from Homeless Coalition would have a different outtake. People from the Alliance would have a different outtake. So, yeah, I do think it would be something important to have all at the table.
That's the work before us. And I think it's going to be hard work, but it's going to, we got to tackle it, in my opinion. Very good.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hey, one more question.
Yes.
I didn't, you know, on any of the presentations, I've heard anything about fentanyl. I did see one slide from, I think it was Renee Antle's presentation, basically referenced fentanyl test kits or testing.
...averaging at least four reactives a month from clients letting them know.
You probably need to go up. Go up to the microphone, please.
You just got to talk on the record. Anything for me?
Hang on, if you would, just a couple minutes. I don't think so, Boles.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So fentanyl is something we're not talking about. And, you know, I'm very uneducated in that. You know, you hear on the national news, the portions that are tremendous poundies that are coming over the border. You hear cartels. You hear the tremendous addiction to it. And it's, I think it took 200,000 deaths in America just in...
You know, it's concerning what we're, I mean, I think I touched on that it is intermixed. We've educated our clients that if they're methamphetamine users and are injecting it, you know, now that they are at risk of an opioid overdose. And that has been kind of proven by the fentanyl test reps. We have to be very cautious on how they've tested. They have to add it to about four ounces of water. It's a little bit different than the heroin, then they put it right in the cooker. They have to wait three minutes. So there are some barriers. Do they have clean water to do that testing piece? Harmony, who does the prevention services here, she's very good at following them up. But she's told me she's typically about four a month that report reactives around the fentanyl. And so there is fentanyl here. I know that she usually has been what spiked overdoses. She was very concerned on Friday to me that, you know, hey, I had four clients of the six report overdoses implementing naloxone. That, you know, that kind of leads us that many, you know, typically we might get one or two a month reported to us down here. So that is concerning. So that probably means there's been a spike in the fentanyl. And Douglas County, we've seen when the powdered fentanyl, the color hit the two counties, or I'm sorry, hit Portland area and also hit Medford. Those are being seen in a different, like a bright green drug when they're doing the cooking in Douglas County. And that was reported to us by ambulance drivers and that. So I think, you know, just that relationship like with the Sheriff's Department and us to communicate those things so that we know what to do, because that increases, they're going to be one of the first people on site, you know, to react to that overdose. And we're seeing heavier fentanyl overdoses. I mean, that is something that we jumped up 250 reported. We can just look at our data and it goes from up 250 last year of reported overdoses. So I think our data is supporting that there is a large amount of fentanyl in the drugs.
Thank you.
So I hope there's not, I wish there was a science, you know, and but there's, we just building that relationship with the clients to trust and tell us, you know, is key. And I mean, when I see Harmony in Action Man or any of my staff, and how they can build that rapport with these clients and like educate them on how to test and take some precautions, but carry that naloxone so that they can reverse a friend's death is a good thing.
Members of the public.
Can I ask something? I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see me raising my hand or not, but this is Renee. I just wanted to ask what Jane said about the naloxone and the Narcan. And I think that's why it's been so important to us to partner with law enforcement too, because they are often, I'm sure, as they can tell you, they can often be the first ones on site. And so making sure that our law enforcement officers are equipped to address overdoses, but also the general community too. And that goes a little bit beyond our role at HIV Alliance. But we have partnered with folks in Coos County and Curry County to do community awareness events about overdose. And I think making sure the community is aware of fentanyl, because it's often, you know, a family member or a loved one who responds to an overdose is not the person necessarily who's using the drugs, obviously. So I think it's really important for the community to wear these too.
Great. Members of the public, Mr. Schreiber, please.
Thank you, Board.
You can take your mask off.
Thank you. Yeah. Ed Schreiber, I'm on the Brookings City Council, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the city of Brookings today. But I appreciate the chance to come up here to take part in the most beautiful half-hour drive on any highway in Oregon. And thank you for your words and action today on behalf of the Coast Trail. I listened earlier, and that's such a great, I was singing about driving that when I was driving up here, how great it is to have that coast trail. Anyway, so thank you. These thoughts that I'm going to share represent conversations I've had with mostly South County representatives over the last couple of months and a lot of research I've done on Measure 110 and harm reduction. I did talk to Renee. She was kind enough to have a half-hour conversation with me. I've talked to Harmony Beckett twice. To answer your question quickly before I get started on fentanyl, what I learned through Harmony and then also, I think it was a conversation with Diana Cooper, who's probably watching in, is that a lot of addicts want that fentanyl in there because it strengthens the high. It gets them further up than they want to go. According when I talked to Harmony, she said that the majority of tests that she gets back, as you said, are positive for fentanyl. But the tests don't tell you how much fentanyl is actually in the drug. So it could be a lethal dose and it could be a very minor dose. So that's kind of what the problems that we're dealing with on the fentanyl issue. Anyway, I truly appreciate those in our community who are working to tackle our substance abuse problems here in Curry County. On harm reduction, I look at it as kind of like nuclear energy. It can be used as a very productive thing, or it can cause mass destruction. And I'll go on and kind of show you what I mean. The history of harm reduction, my first experience with it was in my teens and twenties in Amsterdam, where in the 70s, they legalized cannabis. Later on, they legalized prostitution and sex trade. And last time I was there, actually, a homeless guy pulled a knife on me. And it's just kind of that place right around the block from Anne Frank's house. Not the kind of place I really want to go back to. But here in the Pacific Northwest, we really discovered harm reduction in the city of Vancouver, British Columbia. Back in 1998, they legalized needle exchanges. In 2003, 15 years later, they went to safe injection sites. In 2020, they went to opium vending machines. And for all their efforts in the harm reduction arena, overdose deaths in British Columbia went up over 150% between 2008 and 2020. Also in Vancouver, the neighborhood where harm reduction services are most prevalent, over 50% of the addicts that live there are from somewhere else and migrated into Vancouver for, presumably for the lenient drug laws and the free services. In the USA, we saw in the 1990s, perhaps our first vestiges of harm reduction were in schools where, especially on the East Coast, they wanted to limit teenage pregnancies. So they started giving out condoms. And even as far, in Baltimore, they even went as far as injecting Norplant into the arms of teenage girls. A few years later, the federal government banned Norplant because it was unsafe for all American women. So, so best-laid intentions, right? Currently, the US has one official supervised injection site, first in the nation, opened a few weeks ago in New York City. Now, New York Public Health is proposing vending machines for addicts to be put in place later this year. So it seems in my research, the natural progression of harm reduction starts with decriminalized narcotics. And then you move to needle exchange services and counseling for addicts. Then you get up to safe injection sites. And the end game is government-supplied narcotics, because government-supplied narcotics can take out fentanyl. They can take out the stuff that kills you. So right now, what I see in Curry County is we're at step two. We have that needle exchange. Are we ready for that step three? Or do we need to take action to prevent that? I was going to talk a little bit about the benefits of harm reduction, but that's been covered by everybody here. So I'll skip that, except to say that Measure 110 does not dedicate any amount of funding for inpatient rehab treatment itself. And I think that's what Jerry was referring to when he was saying they changed the name. Well, because the name had treatment in it. And it's not really traditional, what we call treatment for drug addiction. It's, a lot of it's counseling and making things safer for addicts. So the costs, according, the costs, the societal cost on this. Although some harm reduction, there is harm reduction to the individual addict. For others, we could call, you might call these policies harm continuation or harm enhancement either, because we need to remember, the longer a person abuses drugs, the more damage he or she does, not only to themselves, but also to those around them. So here are the issues that Renee mentioned, a couple of them. But here are the issues that have not really been talked about so far today. Treatment is voluntary. There's no mandates in this that any addict even attempt to get clean. Addicts are free to continue their self-destructive behavior indefinitely. And meaning those with mental illness will most likely get worse. The children of addicts will continue to be neglected and abused. One of the participants in our meeting today, co-authored a paper a few years ago, stated, "The research strongly supports," quote, "research strongly supports an increased risk of substance abuse disorders among the adolescent children of addicted parents." If you keep a parent addicted, there's a high probability that that child is going to end up with a substance abuse disorder. The spouses, friends, and parents will continue to suffer as they watch their loved ones self-destruct. Many of the families live in fear of what their addicted spouse or son or daughter might do next. Many times, it's a very real danger, a real violent thing that they're anticipating and living with, violence against an innocent person. A prolonged period of addiction will result in more illicit drug deals and more narcotic dealers. And more crime as addicts continue to fund their addiction, because it does take funding at this point. So you get theft from homes and open garages, smashing grab crimes from cars of tourists, which we've seen on our byways, and locals, shoplifting, victimization of local businesses, trespassing, illegal camping, trash, related environmental damage, health risks, and obviously more burden on law enforcement as they need to respond to these crimes. I mentioned the New York facility that just opened a few weeks ago. They did a survey of the people who were actually signed up for the safe injection program there. 75% of the people who signed up were not from that community. Some of them came as far as two hours away. My fear if this ever happened in Curry County, could we get people coming from Humboldt and Del Nord and Josephine and Coos County? I think it's possible. I just wanted to touch on current law about potential safe injection sites in Oregon. Safe injection sites are currently outlawed by federal law. But so are marijuana dispensaries. And so is growing marijuana. And so is crossing the US border without proper documentation. So what happens is, in our current political culture, some laws are not enforced if the political leadership chooses to ignore those statutes. The result is, at least here in Oregon, counties and cities need to act directly to protect their citizens when the state refuses to. I'd like to think that people in Portland and Salem always do what's right for rural Oregon, but that's not been my observation in the 18 years I've lived here. And we should not expect OHA to protect Curry County from bad policies that originate in Portland and Salem, because OHA is making the policies, right? So, and we don't need to expect, I don't think we should expect the nonprofit organizations acting here to protect Curry County. They simply apply for the funding and implement the programs that are funded by the government or the funding agency. Hopefully, I would like to say, I'd like them to be transparent about that and be at meetings like this so we can at least learn about them. HIV Alliance, I, like I said, I spent time with Renee, spent time with Harmony, and I don't necessarily, I, you know, I see what they're doing and I see what they're trying to get done. But the truth is, in Brookings, when I found about this, a meeting here a few weeks ago, well, the city manager in Brookings didn't know what was going on. The chief of police didn't know what was going on. It kind of happened outside the government perpoo. So what I have seen, but, you know, going back to your role, what I think we need to expect from the Board of Commissioners is to protect us from the bad policies that come from outside the county. That's your job, right? So what I have seen recently is huge grants being offered to nonprofit organizations with little or nor regard or knowledge of by local elected government. with little or nor regard or knowledge of by local elected governments. This was vividly displayed last April when a government grant was almost awarded to turn one of Brookings downtown motels into a low barrier homeless shelter. It was only because our friend Brad Alcorn actually called the granting agency that the city found out about it and we were able at the last minute to discuss it and make a decision. So Measure 110 will result in millions of dollars in harm reduction funding coming to Currie County in the near future. Free money is great. We all love free money, but what cost is it going to give to our community? Please don't assume the BOC will be asked to approve how it will be spent. I urge you to be proactive and decide what kind of harm reduction policies are appropriate for Currie County and which ones need to be prohibited. One final note, I, last month, I spent time in a couple of big cities. I spent time in Fort Worth, Texas. I spent time in Portland, Oregon, within days of each other. Fort Worth, Texas, streets were clean. Families were doing their Christmas shopping together. You know, the kids were playing in the parks. It was a very safe place to go. A few days later, I was in Portland, Oregon, and I was watching where I step. There was human excrement. There was chaos. It was just stopic, trash everywhere. It's kind of scary place to be. I'd never want to take my grandkids there. What's the difference? Well, there are lots of differences between Fort Worth and Portland, but Fort Worth and the state of Texas have been very careful with harm reduction policies. Oregon and the city of Portland have embraced wholehearted, excuse me, wholehearted embrace of harm reduction. So I urge you to be careful. Currie County would be wise to avoid the mistakes made by Portland and other cities and decide to make limits on harm reduction policies and activities allowed within this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Jay Trost?
Well, this gentleman here, you're-
Jay Trost, please.
Nope. Jay, this gentleman raised his hand before Jay. Jay, you're after this gentleman.
You just didn't see his hand.
Hey guys, my name's Kirk. What's that?
He's a Blazer fan.
Uh, sometimes. I'm a hat fan. I'm also a drug addict. I've, I've been sober for quite a while now, but I will always remain an addict. And I first want to say thank you, Dane, you and your associates, the HIV Alliance. A few years ago, I overdosed on a shot of heroin and meth. I woke up on the kitchen floor. If me and my roommates didn't have access to the HIV Alliance and the needle exchange, I wouldn't have woke up. We had naloxone because of you guys. So thank you.
Congratulations, by the way.
I appreciate that. Thanks. But it wasn't just me. After that, it kind of gave me that, that wake-up call. I was able to, to become sober and, and receive help. And now I do what I can to, to try and give back. I know a lot of people around here and the drugs are here, the addicts are here, they're everywhere, they're not going away. And this isn't to bring them here and it's not to, to support their habits. It's, it's to help them. And there's going to be negative associations with a yes, but they're already there and we're not, it's not to endorse those behaviors, not to endorse the crimes and, and say it's okay to do this because it's already happening. This is to, if, if I'm speaking incorrectly, I apologize, but you guys are here to provide resources and help to the ones who want to get better, not to say it's okay to do whatever you want. And I, I fully support that. And I think everyone should support that. And if you are against letting people receive resources, that's, that's just inhumane. I wouldn't be here. I, there's a lot of people that I know that want to get clean and they can't because they can't afford the rehab or treatment. They don't, they don't know where the resources are. There's no one around. They go to the doctor and the doctor treats them like a drug seeker. They leave them there with, because they think they're there just to get a prescription. So these harm reduction sites are extremely important. I, I don't know. Sorry, I'm, I'm getting a little emotional. I haven't actually talked about this in a public setting in a long time. But what, what you guys are doing is extremely important. There are good people out there. All drug addicts aren't the same. A lot of us got, got there from a different situation. I started because I got a prescription for Percocet from a doctor for my back. Ten years later, I'm shooting up heroin. It, it wasn't a choice. It's addiction and does become a disease. It does become something you can't control and there are ones who want to get better and they need the help. I, I have scars on my arm because of infections I got from abscesses because I didn't have access to, to clean resources. And what, what you guys are doing is, is, it needs to be here. It does. I agree, yeah, there, there does need to be some, some limitations. I'm, I'm indifferent on the whole safe injection site. People are going to shoot up where they shoot up. But drop boxes, absolutely. I've, I've seen needles just thrown off to the side in the parks, but I know people that wouldn't throw them there if they had a safe place to go put them. The, the exchanges are extremely important. I, I don't think there should be any reason not to have them around. And I appreciate it. I have met you once in the past, Dane. In 2021, and I appreciate everything you do, you and your associates, so.
Would you be comfortable sharing how long you've been clean?
Um, I, it was a few years ago that I overdosed. I'd never touched heroin or any opiates after that. I did play around with other drugs, not, not too many hallucinogens, but methamphetamines. I, I was in and out of, I tried getting clean for a long time. I have been clean so far since September of last year. So I, I don't have a lot of time under my belt. But I, I definitely have been trying to get sober for a long time and I didn't have, I didn't have people there to, to support me. I do have one person that has helped and, and was, had my back the whole time. And because of her, I, I had the courage to get clean. And I just, I want to help as many people get there as, as I can. And so also to, to answer your question about the fentanyl, because I, I did want to say something about that, it's in everything. It is in every drug now and you have no idea how much you're getting. The people are cutting all drugs with fentanyl and you never know. It's, it's, what was says true, you could be getting like this doesn't mind minuscule amount or you could be getting enough to kill you and you have no idea. So the fentanyl test strips, that's absolutely important. Everything you guys are doing is important and I, I fully support all of it.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Kirk Nelson.
Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, thanks.
Come on up, Jay. Commissioners, thanks. So I was, I wasn't aware of this topic on the agenda and I had some community members walk up and ask if I had an opinion on this, I guess, given my background in, in juvenile justice and behavioral health. And I wasn't, so I'm, I'm essentially kind of speaking on the safe injection sites because the needle exchanges, they're already in place. They've been in town for a while. And so I wasn't quite understanding the whole parameter of what this discussion entailed, if it was funding direction or anything of that nature. But you know, and I, as with Aaron, I also looked at the CDC information and those statistics. And, and there's a lot of statistics out there. And you know, there's some really frightening ones, right? 1999, there was 2.6 overdose deaths per 100,000 individuals. 2019, that number was 15.5. So I mean, it's a, it's, it's more than a little of an increase. And given the state of what we've dealt with in the last two years, it's, it's going to be scary to see what the new numbers are for the upcoming couple of years. But to get to the core of it, I would like to see funding put in, into increasing evidence-based programs for prevention, treatment and recovery. I feel that, that that's, helps to heal the core of drug abuse and particularly intravenous drugs. For instance, the Social Innovation Research Center examined how the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration had utilized public funding to address drug abuse. They found that very little of the funding was directed towards programs that are evidence-based and that funds, quote, "funds spent on ineffective care waste limited resources, prevents patients from receiving effective care and costs lives." Ultimately recommending that Congress should support more research on evidence-based opioid use, prevention, treatment and recovery. One of SAMSHA's opioid prevention strategies are based in identifying risk and protective factors, right? That's a prevention that we would use in the field. Loosely interpreted, these are factors in a person's life that promote the behavior, the risk, and those that protect them from it, protective factors. When working with individuals that need a change in direction in life, we work to increase their protective factors and reduce their risk factors. An example, if a youth had a substance abuse problem and they had a friend whose family allowed that type of behavior to occur in their home, and this is where he would go to find his safe space to use those drugs, we would do everything we could to prevent that person from going to that home and also at the same time, work on getting them into more pro-social activities, sports and hobbies, mentors, things of that nature. And that's an evidence-based practice combined with many. Obviously, it's a minimized example of, of a, of a big, you know, issue, but I think you get the idea. This approach is one of several that would be utilized and are evidence-based and the individuals insist on reinforcing their risk factors. Then we would take a more intensive approach and look at residential treatment, right? I mean, if that was the case, if they kept fighting that. Point being, and in the simplest terms regarding safe injection sites, our community lacks the access to proactive resources and intensive drug abuse treatment programs. And as you're well aware, it isn't unique in rural areas. Given that we lack in that capacity, would you support and advocate for utilizing limited public resources to evidence-based programs that address the core problems with the intention of providing people with a path back to being productive, non-drug dependent individuals? Or would you promote using public funds towards a safer place for them to continue on their current path? And I feel that, you know, if you were to look at the safe injection site theory in a broad lens, for us, we would say, well, that's a, that's a risk factor. That's a, you know, because we're promoting more use essentially. But I do understand and I get the, the other side of the harm reduction, right? So it's, 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 do we invest in programs and like adapt in mental health, public health, behavioral health, long-term treatment facilities? We don't even have a detox center. We don't even have the ability to have somebody detox in our, in our county. And I, and I feel like if we were going to look at priorities, I feel that that, those areas would be on my personal list of priorities. So if you have any influence over where, you know, $110 can be spent, I would advocate that you, you use them in those, in those, in those areas. And if you're going to take a stance, I would, my half a cent, because I don't think I qualify for two cents, but would be, you know, if you're going to take a stance, my, my suggestion would be a resolution or a letter to Congress advocating for the use of these funds to be utilized in prevention, treatment and recovery programs. Because we're, we're sorely lacking in those.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay. Anybody else from the public would like to speak?
Good evening. Started saying good morning because I'm used to being morning with you guys. Good evening, I'm Brett Cecil from Port Orford. I'm also the chair of the Currie County Democrats, but I'm here on my own behalf and on behalf of those who seek and utilize harm reduction in our communities. This is a serious issue for me and for people involved, and they're all citizens of Currie County, making their wellbeing the responsibility of this Board of Commissioners and all of us as citizens, as citizens of Currie County. That said, harm reduction programs have been in existence for years. These programs don't create addicts and do not make addiction easier, rather they make it easier for the leaders of our county to reach out and offer help to those for whom they are responsible. They also retain the engagement of the folks, of the folks with those needs with the providers who help folks with their disease. Syringe exchange programs are an issue of our community public health and sanitation. By my understanding, said programs have existed in numerous locations in addition to Currie County since 2016 with great success. They reduce the spread of transmissible diseases such as HIV, hepatitis C, tuberculosis and Syringes are also used by people for issues other than illicit drugs. Hormone and insulin users also have need for clean sterile supplies. The subsequent interaction with program staff also gives staff the opportunity to assess people's needs and status with some regularity, reducing the need for these folks to unnecessarily seek help in a hospital setting, saving precious time and money as well as keeping these folks engaged in their treatments and giving staff the opportunity to offer service, services to those who need them. Not as a matter of self-promotion nor judgment of those who use or need these services. I have never needed said services personally, but I have known plenty of individuals that have, have been able to improve their health and lives through the use of harm reduction programs. And I think we all just met Kirk. So here's a fine example for us. And at this point, I have to ask, what is the value of a life? I encourage the Board of Commissioners to study and learn about harm reduction and support the continued existence of them in our communities and to support those citizens that are in dire need of said services. Harm reduction is the gateway to recovery and sobriety. Please consider that nicotine and alcohol, being that they too are drugs, might be considered gateways as well. And they all seem to be perfectly legal everywhere in our country. Harm reduction is part of a plan, a plan to recovery. I thank you for considering my words. I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Anybody else from the public would like a public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Gardner and I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Advance Health. Thank you, Board. Appreciate it. And wonderful commentary. Thank you for facilitating and having this great conversation about the harm reduction and 110. Not much I can really add to this, other than I'd like to let you know that Advance Health stands in a position that we're working with all of these grants and helping transform the community's perception of what, one, the CCOs can do. Two, we want to allow and let everyone know that we stand in a position to support and offer help when you need to facilitate these conversations. If they need to be outside of this, we want to be there for you and with all the community partners and stakeholders. As you pointed out, there are so many millions of dollars being put into mental health, behavioral health and SUD right now. It's staggering. It just, you look at it and your, you just, mind is just blown at this point. And so we're working really hard to establish new foundational aspects of this and considering all the things that we just talked about today. And I think the biggest thing is finding the transparency of what's right for our local communities right now at this time. The, the past is the past. There have been many things that are in place and there's a lot of understanding that still needs to happen with all this. And so whatever we can do to help with facilitating that and offering more advice or more data and if we can look at things. Aaron, thank you for sharing the data for, for your respective counties. We have some of that information at Advance Health. If you'd want to get into some of that as well to, to just learn and see and seek, we can do some work with that, with you on that. But we want to continue to be at the table with you there. So thank you. I just want to let you know that, appreciate the opportunity. And if you need more assistance and more help, our teams stand ready. We have care coordination, intensive care coordination, who's led up by Ross Acker, who's in the audience here. And I have Carol Hood, who's our new behavioral health director at our plan. And we're constantly in the middle of, of this as well and then we want to be able to assist with this. So whatever we can do to make this easier- So whatever we can do to make this easier as far as conversations, please let us know. Thank you, Board.
Mr. Gardner, I'm trying to, for lack of a better term, it's competing for those funds. You know, I think a task force would be in order. And there's just about anybody that spoke today, certainly anybody that spoke could be on that task force and position the county. And you heard some, you just heard Mr. Trost say, treatment center, you know, detox center, all the different things that we're lacking. You heard Lieutenant Hensley mention a couple of different aspects, and certainly the people who spoke. So that's the next step, as I see it. And a very productive day. Glad you came down from Coos Bay. Much appreciated. So we will recruit you to be on a Zoom meeting. And, you know, we'll start the process of how we can, again, put County, Curry County, in a good, good position to receive those dollars and it's back to the plan. Got to have a plan, right, Mr. Cecil?
And as the operations person at our organization, I totally support you, Commissioner, in what you said. You got to have the plan. And let's make it a well-informed one, and let's make it one that you all agree on and the community sees eye to eye on. Because there are opposing and for positions on either side. And everybody's trying to do the right thing in the right way, right? We're all moving in that direction. So support whatever we can.
We also really appreciate Advance Health, All Care Health. But we're in a good position in Curry County to be in your area of jurisdiction and, yeah, we're, and then you had Adapt and Coast Community Health, everybody. It's, we've got some terrific opportunities to improve healthcare in Curry County. We are. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Any other comment, public comment? Speak now.
Pardon me?
Did you still need me to stay? You told me to stay.
No, well, I asked you to. Thank you. That was a half hour ago. Do you have anything you want to add last minute? Because you'll be the first one that we'll, we'll call.
Send you back to jail.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yep. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Joe Smith. And I'd just like to say that some of the testimonies here earlier were absolutely eloquent, very well defined the issues, I think, on both sides. But one item that hasn't been discussed is the spiritual element. In my study of social recovery programs, the most effective ones are those that are spiritual and one-on-one mentoring kinds of programs. And so I would like to suggest that you look at possibly pairing with some groups or especially individuals that are gifted in the area of one-on-one mentoring in the recovery kinds of programs. If our objective is to reduce the amount of people that are going to need these services, then we should probably look at the most effective methods and connections and associations that will accomplish that goal. And bringing God into the equation is at the top of my list. Thank you.
Amen. Anybody else would like to speak to this topic? All right, if not, we're going to dismiss, or not dismiss, we're going to adjourn this meeting. And thank you all for coming. Meeting dismissed. Thanks, Eric.